Check one, check.
He's a musician.
All right, we are calling to order the special meeting of the city council October 1st, 6:00 PM for an interview for an applicant to serve in the tax measure oversight committee. Jonathan, come on down.
Here.
Yes.
Yes. Okay, so we are up to business item 2.1, interview for Larkspur Tax Measure Citizens Oversight Committee. Nice to meet you.
Hello, nice to meet you.
Okay, so.
Yeah, hi.
I am holding a microphone only because it's got to be picked up, so we'll pass the microphone where we talk so that you make sure anybody listening along at home can hear. And welcome.
Thank you.
And we are going to just basically ask some questions, see if it's a good fit. And my first question is, why do you want to be on the tax oversight committee?
Yeah, so my wife and I moved here about five years ago. Left for a little bit during the pandemic and then decided to start a family and came back here to do that. Had our kid about 10 months ago and.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Yeah, it's, we really feel like it's just, it's a boy. Yeah. And we just feel like it's the perfect place to raise a family and we want to really get involved in the local community. We've been trying to get more involved in our local neighborhood and find other ways that we can contribute. And I just happened to see this come up in, I think, a newsletter or something. And I like learning about things. And this felt like a good opportunity to just learn more about how the city works and see if I can contribute to it.
Let me just say, and I'm going to pass the mic while I ask you a question. I just want to comment and say, I think most of us are raising families here because we feel exactly like you do. And it's phenomenal that you want to get involved. Whether or not this works out, there are tons of ways to get involved and tons of openings always. So regardless of what happens, please stay involved because you're going to find a good fit and you will, you know, be able to contribute and, you know, will be a good, good addition to the city. So thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
All right, I'll pass, I'll pass left. I'm sorry, I didn't mean to drop.
No, I was just going to say, I went to my first planning commission meeting, right when the general plan was being talked about just a couple of weeks after my son was born. And yeah, so I'm just excited to find more ways to get involved, whatever they look like.
Hey, great. Thanks. Welcome, Jonathan. It's great to have you here. Can you talk a little bit about your background and what in your background, what skills or perspectives you might bring to the oversight committee?
Sure, yeah. So you can see my employment background here on the application. I am currently the founder of a startup called Cabin, which is focused on helping neighborhoods build stronger local community around the world. We run a neighborhood accelerator program that's designed to help people start, you know, hosting local events, maybe making a community garden, getting involved locally. And so, yeah, so this is something I'm very passionate about and have been thinking about and working on and also want to really live in my own day-to-day life. Before that career, mostly in tech, I was a director of product at Instacart. And, you know, grew with that company. And you can see the rest of it written there.
Thank you. Welcome, neighbor. I think I can throw a rock into your yard.
I saw you in the park the other day, actually.
Yeah, thanks for community barbecues, coffee and donuts. Okay, yeah, so kind of, I guess the question, you know, the tax measures, I'm wondering, this may be, you know, a little bit in the future, but, you know, measure B roads, measure G is, you know, something we pass for storm drains and emergency, you know, kind of what, what do you know about them? And just as a more general, someone who's been in business in this role, what would you see as a red flag? Like, you know, as a referee, when would you throw down a flag? Like, what are you looking for?
Yeah, so like I said, I like to learn about things. There's lots of fun public information about all this. Just to make sure I have the context right, so I think there was measure C in 2013, 0.5% special tax that has expired. And then was sort of replaced in 2017 with measure B, 0.75% general tax that's ongoing. And then followed up in 2022 with an extra quarter percent in measure G, that's a general. B oriented originally more towards roads and G oriented more towards storm drains and emergency response. There's a lot of stuff we could talk about here, but I know we only have a couple of minutes. I was really impressed with the road improvements from 2014 to present, particularly the, I learned about, what is it, the pavement index going from 38 to 86. And. Yeah, I saw the rankings. It's actually very cool that they have such a good ranking system and like measurement of this stuff. So that was exciting to see. And it also seems like, you know, really impressive work of the last, you know, almost 10 years, basically, improving the roads. I missed out on the worst of that luckily. But yeah, I think there are definitely more questions I had, actually a lot of questions. I was particularly interested in the storm drain stuff. I live in Heather Gardens, which is, you know, I think somewhat at risk. And so was curious to learn more about, I know there was 1.9 million allocated for the Heatherwood Pump Station last year. So I was wondering if, you know, that work's been done or more broadly to get a sense of if the measure B undesignated monies that are currently being allocated towards other things account for the kind of full cost, which I think was estimated at 20 to 30 million over the next 10 years for storm drains. So I think I'd want to understand a little bit more about, you know, basically, do we think that the revenue is going to cover those costs? My rough back of the envelope math says maybe, but I'd want to, you know, learn more about that. And I also had some questions around if the council has taken any actions on resolution 5717 from when measure B originally passed, which had an 80% designation for roads. Seems like now the roads are in much better shape and that some of that money could be potentially directed towards other uses, particularly since that's in the general fund. So I didn't know if there had been any updated resolutions there. I know that was a lot to throw out.
Yeah, you did your homework more than I remember ever. And I've been here during all those resolutions and those things. So fantastic. Thanks for doing an overview because that was a real primer for me, too. One of the things that our volunteer groups do that work and volunteer to be an oversight committee is they have to work real closely with our staff. How, what do you, in our, you work the pleasure of the city council and the staff. But it's really important that we have volunteers who are collaborative with the staff. How, what do you think about your role with them should you be on an oversight committee?
Yeah, I'm excited to work with city staff. I think, you know, they've prepared most of these reports that I was reading through. So I think I have a lot to learn from them. And yeah, I appreciate how much, you know, open and available information that there is. I certainly, you know, have questions and things I want to learn about, but, you know, generally speaking, like I said, I think it's been impressive to see how the city has executed on the use of funds over the last decade. And so I think really my biggest interest is just how do we do the same type of thing, you know, over the next decade for the storm drains and the newer priorities in the city.
We have a really good public works track. He's laughing because he's.
All right, do you have any questions for us that we can answer for you?
Yeah, I guess my first big one is just, you know, what are you looking from this committee? I think obviously, you know, tax measure oversight is like the first order answer, but I'm curious how it's looked in the past working with this committee or what sort of, you know, things you're ideally looking for from members of the committee.
You know, most of the time our staff works primarily with these oversight committees and they meet intermittently. I don't think they have, well, do they meet, they meet two fixed meetings a year and then as needed, ad hoc meetings and things. And then a report to the city council when it's needed. So, I mean, I really appreciate, I mean, part of what allows us to advocate for these type of tax measure increases is having the community realize that we really take oversight very seriously and auditing it very seriously so that it isn't a slush pot that nobody knows where the money goes. So that's why I think this kind of role and stepping forward would introduce you to a lot of opportunities that are, that the city has for other volunteering, but it's, to me, it's an important role. So just, just the amount of research you did already shows, shows that you're interested in really digging in and drilling down to the, to where the funds are going. And that's what we promised the community that we're going to have. Did I answer your question? I think I lost track.
The only thing I would add to that is the city council relies, so as a city council, we can't be in the weeds on everything. So we have to delegate certain stuff to different groups and subcommittees and things like that. So we rely on this group to inform us, you know, make sure everything is going right. If there's problems, let us know, you know, so that's, that's why it's so important because we wouldn't know if you're not doing your job and telling us. So that's, for me, that's the most important thing. Other questions that you have?
Um, lots more questions that are probably better directed to staff, but, you know, happy to continue the conversation.
Up to you. I mean, we had another couple of minutes. If you have more stuff you want to talk about. If you don't, don't feel like, you know, like some interviews that you have to make sure you ask a bunch of questions. You don't have to ask questions. So, you know, if there are questions you have, happy to answer the best we can.
Cool. I guess just out of curiosity, since I live in the neighborhood, has there been any progress on the Heatherwood Pump Station with the 1.9 million allocation from last year? Does anyone happen to know?
I would direct that to staff.
Help me to put you on spot.
Yeah. It's actually out for bid now. The bids are due in October, so it should be under construction next year.
And for people listening at home who couldn't hear that, which wasn't mic'd up, it's out for bid now and we should have an update next year. And with that, thank you, you know, for taking the time of doing this. And I guess, I don't know how the process works, staff will let you know, I think. Is that how this works? Thank you very much. Okay, thanks for your time. Appreciate it. And with that, we will adjourn our special meeting and take a 15-minute dinner break. Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the city council meeting for October 1st. Let's start with a roll call, please.
Councilmember Andre.
Here.
Councilmember Paulson. Vice Mayor Way.
Here.
Mayor Candell.
I'm here.
Okay, with that, let's move on to the pledge. If you are able, please stand. Thank you very much. Next item is public comment. Public comment is for matters not on the agenda. If anybody would like to make a comment on something not on tonight's agenda, now would be your opportunity. Please come on up to the podium. Seeing no one, let me turn to our online viewers. Allison, can you check if there's anyone online that would like to make a public comment?
Looking for any raised hands from the Zoom audience members. And there's no public comment.
Okay. Moving on to item three, presentations, there are none. Moving on to item four, approval of the consent calendar. Let me first ask if there's anyone on council who would like to comment on an item on the consent calendar. Seeing none, let me put it to the public. Is there anyone from the public who would like to comment on an item on the consent calendar? Seeing none, let's go to Zoom. Allison, can you tell me if there's anyone on Zoom who would like to comment on the consent calendar? If there is, please raise your hand.
Looking for any raised hands from our Zoom audience members. And there's no public comment.
Okay, can I get a motion?
I'll move to pass the consent calendar, four items.
I'll second.
Can we get a roll call?
Councilmember Andre.
Yes.
Councilmember Paulson.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Way.
Yes.
Mayor Candell.
Yes. Okay, moving on to the city manager's report. Mr. City Manager, could we have a report, please?
Mr. Mayor, this evening I want to highlight the fact that we have some volunteer opportunities for members of the community. We have some vacancies on some of our volunteer boards and one countywide commission. So we are seeking applicants to sit on the library board. And it's a really exciting time to be on the library board. We're doing something very big and exciting right now. We also still have vacancies on our rent review board. And then lastly, there's a vacancy for the Larkspur appointment to the Marin County for the Commission on Aging. And the current deadline for applications is October 10th. And there is a link on the city website up front and center in the announcements. So encourage folks to check that out and take advantage of this opportunity to get involved.
Okay, thank you for that. Moving on, let's see council member reports. Do there any council members that'd like to give a report tonight?
Sure, I'll go. So I'll be brief, but there were some really exciting developments for the Transportation Authority of Marin. As some of you may remember from years past, we had a bike share program that we were going to try to implement and solve the last mile, you know, specifically to Bart and some of our other transportation hubs. So we're going to start the Redwood Bike Share Pilot Program. And Larkspur is one of seven cities where they'll deploy 300 e-bikes or pedal-assisted e-bikes, legal e-bikes, mind you, that go 15 miles an hour. And the fee is 25 cents a minute. You pay as you go. And it'll be at the ferry, the smart station downtown here, Niven, South Aliso. So hopefully this will really help with traffic, with use of public transportation, with circulation in general, with just, you know, the enjoyment of riding if you've never been on an e-bike. And I was very excited that that's all, you know, approved and will be coming very soon. The other thing is, we're all thinking about sea level rise and TAM has really been trying to think ahead and develop a plan for the next 25-plus years. What are we going to do specifically for us in Larkspur? The cost plus plaza, we know when there's, you know, high tide, moon tides in the winter with a lot of rain, you know, traffic comes to a halt. So there are many, many tools in the toolbox, different funding challenges. You know, there's levees that can be built, tide gates that can be built. You know, this actually goes up to South Aliso and people who live on Creekside and Marina and so forth. So this is something where I'll, you know, keep us posted and of course, we'll be involved as a council. But I'm excited that we're not just solving yesterday's problems, but really trying to think ahead a little bit. And lastly, on the Marin Clean Energy, it was a pretty interesting and very kind of heated meeting where PG&E has decided to keep our nuclear facility in central California open. And, and we're paying for it whether we like it or not. And the question for MCE was, do we accept that energy and therefore kind of put on our clean energy label that we, we have nuclear? And one of the issues for energy with wind and solar, if you look at all the graphs, you know, it kind of comes to dark winter nights where there's no sun and lots of energy demand. And, you know, batteries are not enough and you start firing up diesel and so forth. So the question is, if you really want to go green, if you want to, you know, have a stopgap till we really get better battery capacity in wind and solar, you know, do you go nuclear? So I did vote yes. It was, it was quite a majority, only one no. And I didn't feel good about that, you know, that's one of our options, but it's an option that I feel we have. So that's it. Just wanted to keep you guys posted.
Appreciate that. Other reports?
Sure. Well, you go. Your next slide.
Great, thanks. First of all, I would just want to congratulate the Chamber of Commerce and the Larkspur Community Foundation on two extremely successful events, the Wine Stroll and the Rose Bowl Dance. I think both were really well-attended and so many people had, I just heard so many positive comments. And it really, I think both events built a great sense of community here in Larkspur. So thank you and congratulations to both the Chamber and the Larkspur Community Foundation. The last week or so, I've been, you know, talking to colleagues, my, our colleagues in different jurisdictions about climate issues. And what I found was interesting is that several of our neighboring agencies, for instance, Corder Madera, San and Selmo, Fairfax and Nevada, they each have a climate action committee, very similar to a Parks and Recs committee or commission, I'm sorry, or, you know, or Heritage Preservation Board. And I think that was an interesting concept where, you know, the city council would appoint resident volunteers to sit on a climate action committee or sustainability committee, however we decide to call it. But in these people, you know, these volunteers would make policy recommendations with respect to climate, greenhouse gas emissions, flooding, sea level rise, among other issues. And I thought it was a really great idea also, just so that people could come and that there would be a forum for residents to come and engage with the city regularly on climate issues. So anyways, I put that out there. I thought maybe at some point, we as a council could maybe discuss, you know, whether it might make sense, yeah, maybe to see whether it might make sense for us to consider forming a committee like that. Anyways, that's it. Thank you.
All right, thanks, Catherine.
A couple of things, back to your Larkspur Chamber. I'm the liaison with Larkspur Chamber and they are sponsoring a candidate debate between our two county supervisor candidates for District Two, which is where we sit. So for those of you who are interested, it's on Tuesday, October 15th from 7:00 to 8:00 PM in the Bon Air Shopping Center. I think they're using one of the commercial spaces that's available. So that's our two candidates for District Two, Brian Colbert and Heather McPhail Suridran. So I always get her, I always struggle on her last name. I'd like people to know that. Second thing is, I sit on the Marin Mayors and Council Members Legislative Committee, which meets once a month. And the state legislature and the governor signing of bills just ended yesterday. And we had a big report last week, but I thought I'd just pull a few of them out that people in our community are particularly interested in knowing about, I think. First of all, our legislative colleagues who report to this committee said the end of the year of this legislative session was the most contentious they've ever seen between the leadership of the Assembly, the Senate and the Governor, which may set up for some interesting legislation in the year ahead. But there were over 1,000 bills introduced by the legislature this last year and the governor vetoed about 18% of them. But he signed every single one about housing. All 32 bills that were introduced that will be, impact us in the smaller communities about housing, they were all signed. I think ones to recognize is that we're going to have a lot of changes in what our housing expectation is, particularly for our housing element. The package of laws Newsom signed could, could more state scrutiny, would add more state scrutiny and new penalties for pushback on housing and shelter construction. Cities and counties will be required to plan for housing for very low-income people, streamline permitting processes and expand some renter protection. A bill also passed that the Attorney General will be allowed to pursue civil penalties up to $50,000 a month if cities don't meet these obligations. There are a lot more, but I thought that was a highlight. And there's more renter protections that were passed. One of the renter protections allows for tenants to receive 10 business stays if they receive an eviction notice as opposed to five now. There are a lot more renter protections that were passed, but that's pretty much the highlight of it. So I just think it's important that we all know that we fit under a legal rubric that is the state legislature created. And it's pretty astounding how many laws they create every year. The last thing was all of the bills that dealt with homeowners insurance and particularly with wildfire insurance, they all failed. They never, all the bills were dead in session. They never got out of session, which meant they were never debated or they were debated and then rejected. So the current standard is that that's a huge crisis that most of us are looking at, which is homeowners and property insurance, particularly in the wildland urban interface. But at this point, there's, it's been turfed back to the Insurance Commissioner to come up with some solutions for it. So this committee reviews with our legislative analysts all the bills that come forward that would definitely affect cities in Marin County. So there are a whole lot of other ones, but a lot of them are specific to the regional area where that legislator got a bill passed. Our Assemblyperson Damon Connolly, I believe, had five of his bills that were signed into law by the governor. So he is, represents our community. So if you have questions about that, it's important to reach out to Supervisor Connolly, not Supervisor, Assemblyman Connolly. That's it.
All right. With that, I will close councilmen's, council member reports. There are no public hearings, which brings us to the main event. We have two items regarding the library. Item 8.1, Larkspur Commons Project. Can we get a staff report for 8.1, please?
There's two separate presentations, Mr. Mayor. Do you want us to do them both or do you want to take up the first one and then take comment and then do the second one?
Why don't we do one and take comment and then move on to the second?
Okay, so we'll do 8.1A, which is the overall project budget and consideration of enhancements. And as I pass the baton to the Public Works Director, Julian Skinner, this is sort of part one of two parts. We're taking direction this evening so that we can then bring you a more detailed budget and financing plan based on the direction we get this evening.
Okay, and just for people to understand, 8.2 is a discussion about the parking. That's going to be a separate.
8.1B.
Sorry, 8.1B will be a discussion about the parking. So if you have comments or interest in the parking, hang in there. You don't need to talk about them in 8.1A. We're going to get to that one next, okay? Okay, thank you. Mr. Skinner, what do you have for us?
Good evening, Mayor, members of council, members of the public. Julian Skinner, I'm the Public Works Director. So tonight, as the city manager mentioned, we have a couple of presentations for you that we're looking for direction back. So I am here tonight with the two leaders from our design build team. We have Chris Knoll from Nolan Tam and Eric Andreessen from, excuse me, Alton Construction, who are with us this evening. So the first item is a discussion of project enhancements to be considered. And this includes a brief review of the budget since the enhancement conversation impacts the project budget. In our capital improvement program, we actually have six projects that cover the new library construction that's underway. And that's basically due to the different funding sources. We received two different state grants, a 5.2 million grant and a $1 million grant that have different uses. And so the library was split into a library site and a library building based on these two different grants. And then we also have the $5.2 million Commons Foundation donation that's being used for the library also. In addition to that, there's just over four and a half million of local funds in the project that are primarily for site work and access that's not included in the grants. And then also for the community space that's being added to the library square footprint. So you add up those funding sources and the total budget that's approved today is $16.1 million. And that's for the entirety of the project. So that's the construction, that's the design, that's staff time, and that's consultants. The anticipated project cost, based on our estimates today, is 16.5 million. So it's 400,000 over what the adopted budget is. And as you recall, when we did the budget actions and we were looking for local funding to meet the funding gap, we determined that landscaping, if we were short of funds, was one of the things that could be deferred to a future project. So we initially left $400,000 of the landscaping out of the approved budget. In addition to that, when we developed the project budget, we talked about a number of potential changes or enhancements that we could add to the project. And it's a combination of a couple of things. One is when Alton and Nolan Tam provided their proposal to us, they listed some items that if you're interested in this, we weren't able to fit it in the project budget, but if it makes sense to you, here's what we would charge to add this into the project. And then in addition to that, we've had some things that have come along during our project development process that we think would be good items to consider for adding into the project, too. And so when we adopted the budget, we said, as we move along into the process and we're getting close to construction and we kind of see where our budget is, we would come back to you and discuss these potential enhancements with you.
Julian, I'm sorry, would you prefer us to hold questions till the end or would you like us to ask when we think of them?
Whatever works for you.
Well, let me just ask, so just so I am clear, the last slide that you had, the city is contributing 4.65 million for the library project before any of the enhancements that you're about to talk about, is that right?
Sort of. So yeah, the overall budget includes about 630,000 in contingency allowance. So included in that 4.6, some of that, there's about 100,000 of that that we had set aside for contingencies. And there's about 500,000 in the state grant that is aside for contingencies. But yeah, that 4.65 is before anything that we ask you to add, that 4.65 is already in the budget.
And when you say contingency. And and when you say contingencies, just so I know, are are we talking about? Um, I I know sometimes projects go over budget. Um, is is that what we're expecting? We may need, even if we don't add anything? Or is that something that, hey, we've got six hundred thousand dollars in a pot that we can choose to do six hundred thousand dollars worth of upgrades for?
So I'll get to that in a minute. Initially, as a project started, it was set aside for unforeseen conditions. Now that we're halfway through, we've got through the design, we have a recommendation on how much of that contingency we think we should still hold on to for other unforeseen's that may come up between now and the project end. So there is a recommendation of how much of that contingency allowance that we're comfortable applying to um some of these enhancements. And that shows up in the math.
Pat, thank you for clarifying that. And I noticed the city manager has picked up the mic.
I was just going to try to put that all in the different words, which is just you've committed four point six five to ensure the elements, the project you've already approved will happen. You've authorized the Public Works Director to work with me and his project team to try to bring it in at a lower price than that. So that's what Julian's talking about when he says we're starting to find some savings that we might be able to move some of these dollars around to, so we're not necessarily spending all of that money.
Got it. Thank you.
Um, so I'm just gonna quickly go over these slides. I know the text is small. Hopefully uh folks can uh follow along. I've highlighted the the important numbers on this. This is all of the budget actions that we've taken to date, just a history and how we got to the sixteen point one. So initially, we funded the two library projects uh once we knew we were getting the state grants. So we funded a uh access and parking project and a library project and the library project we funded with the state grant and then five million of the Commons Foundation. That was the first budget item you took on on the library. Um, and then um in February, we started to have conversations um about this building and looking at opportunities uh over the Commons. So we added two projects into the C I P with partial funding just to allow us to start looking at the possibility of um moving city uh functions over to city hall functions over to uh the Commons. Um, and then as the budget was um adopted and we concluded our conversation about potentially moving city offices, uh, we determined we're not going to follow that path. Uh, but we did identify that there was an opportunity to add some space to the library. It's constricted or restricted to a certain square footage based on the grant. Um, but we know that there's folks in the community that are looking for a bigger library and that meeting space is a is a is a common thing that we hear among the public as far as needs. So uh, we converted the city hall projects to community space projects uh when we adopted the C I P. Um, and then we added um a library uh landscaping item because it hadn't been identified in the previous uh budget because it fell outside of the the two initial uh grants. Um, then in February of this year, once we had the proposal from Alton and Nolan Tam, uh, we did a budget amendment to arrive at the sixteen point one figure that I mentioned earlier. So uh, all of the six projects at that time got funded um in the amounts that you see um in yellow. And then as you go in the columns past the yellow, it shows the funding source. So there's the uh, the two state library grants from the first two columns and then the Commons Foundation. And then the last column is the general fund, which at the time of award is how we uh were able to get to the sixteen point one by allocating um general fund. And at the time, we said we'll come back and look at some other funding sources and see if we recommend swapping out the general fund for um other funding sources. And then we did come back uh when the budget was adopted um this year. Um, and you authorized uh putting the remainder of Measure C um into the project as well as some uh Measure B money primarily for uh the access uh road and also the community space. Um, so that was the last, that's the last budget item that you took um that has a sixteen point one. This slide, unfortunately, the numbers are even smaller, but this is, this is everything all together. Um, if folks, the PDF is online and there, I believe there may be some handouts left in the back. But this breaks down each of the six library uh, the Commons projects. Uh, and it further divides it. Um, in addition to the funding that I mentioned before, it also shows the category. So how much is going to the Alton contract? How much is going to consultants? How much is going to utilities? And how much is going to staff time? And this is where, when you dive into the numbers, you can pick out those two contingency allowances. So in that second uh kind of grouped row there where it says the library, there's the five hundred thousand dollar contingency allowance that's in the library budget. And then a little bit further down, uh, you have the hundred and thirty, hundred and thirteen thousand in the um, excuse me, in the community space number. So those are the two uh contingency allowances that we have that are within that um sixteen point one.
Julian, could you refresh my memory as to why there's a separate line item for community space access? And then there's community space. The access, why is that broken out separately?
Um, so we just did the same thing that we were doing with the library. So the library, based on the grant, the grants needed to be split out into the building and the access. And so as we um are working with our consultants on developing this project further, we've asked them to split out their site work from the building. And so it just followed the same program to do that also with the building, even though the funding sources somewhat are are the same. We um followed the same program that we had with the library building.
Editorial comment for folks scratching their head at home. I know this seems kind of nutty, but we had to do it this way so we can report all of this to the state because of the restrictions on the library grant.
And Mr. Skinner, can you um explain if the Levine Grant for the parking and the access, is that, are there any restrictions tied to that?
Um, yes, it has to be, we gave um a list of improvements that we would um construct with that grant. So it's primarily um everything outside of the building. So the site work, the parking lot, landscaping, um, utilities are all eligible for that uh grant.
But there's no, is there a timing restriction?
It has the same time restriction as the main grant, so it's March thirty-first of twenty-six.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Um, so as I mentioned, overall, uh, we do have that shortfall um of four hundred thousand in the landscaping that we've been carrying along. And then uh, we do have that contingency allowance of six hundred and thirteen thousand that I mentioned, that's half a million to the library building and a hundred and thirteen to the community space. Um, and then we do have a number of enhancements that we've been um considering. Um, Alton did provide pricing in the proposal and the other ones that we've come up, we've asked Alton for pricing. And then, as you recall, we have hired Kitchell as to do our construction management. So uh, the cost estimates that we're asking uh Alton for, Kitchell are also generating a a cost estimate just to make sure that we're uh in the ballpark and that um the numbers reflect the the work that we're asking for. Um, so as we progress through design review and getting into the next phase is doing construction documents so that we can break ground and do the work. There are a number of uh these funding enhancements that are going to need decisions in the next few weeks so that we can continue on the construction um documents. Um, as I mentioned, uh, we feel at this point that uh we can probably release about half of that contingency allowance that we allocated at the beginning towards some of these um enhancements. We would like to preserve the other half for other things that may uh come up over the next fifteen to eighteen months as we uh continue to work on on the project. Um, and then again, so any of the enhancements that we're going to talk about um beyond the half of the contingency allowance will require additional funding um actions um in order to add them to the project, in addition to the four hundred thousand in landscaping that we know we're already uh short. Um, so here's a list of um proposals from Alton that came in with um the response to the R F P. Um, so I've highlighted what their preliminary cost is. And again, some of these uh we can work with them. And this is because this is a design build contract, these numbers are all inclusive. This includes the design and the construction. And some of these will be able to value engineer. I'll highlight this eighty-one thousand dollar for a curved bench, which seems like a lot of money for a bench. So um, but you know, the the team had a concept for for a bench and they priced it out. And I, you know, we will work with them on alternate solutions if we uh move forward and we decide we want to add some bench to some of the outdoor space and it won't necessarily end at eighty-one thousand dollars. So but some of these are going to be a little higher, some of these are going to be a little lower. So for a budget perspective, uh, we're looking at plugging these numbers in and we're going to give you a number at the end where we feel we are, given that, again, these are budget numbers and the final cost will come in somewhere a little bit higher or lower. Um, hopefully, my job is to make it lower, so.
Hey, Julian, before you, before you go on, uh, question, uh, the, it says the highlights are items being considered for approval. Who made the decision which of those to highlight and which ones not to highlight?
So at the moment, it's just been the design team um based on some of the feedback we got from stakeholder groups and then also from some of the comments that have come in from the public that we've heard. We figured these are the ones that we can see that there's, you know, some 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 bang for the for the buck in these in these items. Um, again, when you add up all the highlighted, it's an add to the project. So we're not saying we need to do all of these. These are the ones that we've kind of been tracking. And some of them, we've already worked a little pre-designed as we work through the project. Some of these we have to consider, we're probably going to do that because there's been steps that we've already taken um in this project where we needed to go one way or the other. So the ones that are in yellow, we've been leaning that way. And um, you know, we've done some pre-design for them. Uh, the ones that in are in white are not necessarily not valid, but when you look at adding the money into the project, you know, we're just questioning where they lay in a in a priority uh level. And I do know, sorry.
No, just a thank you. Appreciate that.
I do notice that I missed a highlight on this one. If you look at the middle column, the community room outdoor space is something that we think is a value add, and that's definitely something that we've been programming in. So this would be the outdoor patio, but next to the big community room, that should be highlighted on here. And it is included in the numbers as we get further down, but I missed the highlight.
Julian, quick, quick question. And uh, I I may have messed up in in the sense that um, I I know the next item uh is the parking. And one of the issues is the parking will affect the community space potentially. Um, is there a cost item? I mean, is there a reason we should discuss them both? I'm I'm starting to feel like maybe we should talk, talk about them both together because they're so interrelated unless uh you disagree.
Um, they, I mean, they are somewhat. So the, we know if we land on doing a redesign of the the plan, uh, whether it's a number of parking spaces or moving the parking lot and putting the community green space back in there. We know there's a redesign cost to do that because we've been moving through a process with the design we have, and it would be back to the drawing board for some of the disciplines. It's not just the parking lot, but the site electrical, the site storm drains, the retention basins, all of those things would need to now be redesigned for uh a new layout. If it's just reducing the size of the parking lot, that's less of a cost impact redesign work because there's just some things we don't put in the in the final uh project. As far as the work, the cost of the work is, you know, is it more expensive to build the project if we move the parking lot and add the green back in there? We won't really know until we get back um into it and look further at the at the design. You know, I, my sense is it'll be a little bit more expensive because it pushes the parking lot and the utilities a little bit further away from the building. Is it, is it a big number? I I I don't have a a sense.
All right. So so for purposes of tonight, though, the numbers that we're going over for this item are based on the plan that we currently have.
Correct.
Okay, so yeah, maybe, maybe we'll keep them separate. Okay. Uh, we're, we're going to open this up to the public after we have the staff presentation, then everyone will have an opportunity to come up and ask questions. Okay?
Um, okay, I'll just read quickly through in case folks can't read the text here, but the the enhancements that we are considering from Alden's proposal is a um, a sliding door that would connect the one of the meeting rooms in the children's uh library so that we could expand the children's library um if needed for operations. Uh, they propose a patio, outside patio that would be fenced in or a low walled in for the children's library, which we also thought was a good enhancement. Already mentioned the curved bench. Um, and even though we don't have funding for all of the landscaping that's in the project, they did have some landscape enhancements that we think are very important also. So this is additional trees and a and a habitat uh garden that we would like to be able to find uh funding for. Um, the next is a list of um items that have come up through the the course of the project development, either through the stakeholder groups or through a public comment that we've um received. Um, there, the R F P did include an incentive for the contractor to include uh fifteen kilowatt of solar panels on the roof if they could fit it within the the budget. Um, they could not, so it was not included um in the in the contract. However, we did ask um Alton, what would it cost to add those uh solar panels to the roof? Uh, subsequent to that, we've had a lot of conversations about solar. Um, and so we looked at, is fifteen K W enough? Should we double it? And so we then asked for thirty, and then we realized we were probably getting close to what the average building use would be over the year. And so uh, similar to what Corder Madera did, we asked for a cost for doing solar panels that would equivalently over the year run, run the building. And that's right around uh forty K W. Uh, it's important to note that these numbers, again, these are for designing and building the infrastructure. So we're getting numbers here for a solar system that hasn't been designed yet, but these are numbers that um have come in from uh the contractor uh based on looking at the building and their estimate of what it would cost. And then they've also been proofed by uh Kitchell. And then as far as the solar goes, we are fortunate that we had a recent bid in Corder Madera where they put a solar system on that was very close to the size we're looking at. And uh, we're in the ballpark with uh what their actual bid was uh on their project. Um, so I've got the lower solars, the fifteen and the thirty not included, and I just highlighted the the forty uh K W for the solar here. Um, and then also in looking at the solar, um, we were looking at um a small battery backup system for the building. So uh, we could run some portions of the building if if the power goes out. Um, as you recall, the building uh was originally planned with a um a piped gas generator so that we could uh use some of the space as a resiliency center and warming, cooling, clean air events um where the, with the power was not available. Um, but this, the battery backup for this would be more for the day-to-day P G and E um outage um that would just kind of keep the building running. It wouldn't be enough to run the H V A C or the E V chargers out in the parking lot. Uh, but it would provide some backup so that we wouldn't have to use a generator every time the the power uh went out. Um, and then um additional E V chargers. So there's two in the project. We did ask for a cost from Alton to add one. Um, and then uh we found out from P G and E that it's difficult to design a building for future E Vs. They will not supply the power for future E Vs. So um, they will only size the transformer for the building based on the E Vs you're actually going to install. So unfortunately, this doesn't make it super easy to add a couple of E Vs down the road. So um, the whole building will be plumbed for about twenty-two vehicle charging stations. And so uh, we looked at somewhere between the two and the twenty-two total what made sense, and we landed on, let let's shoot for eight. Uh, so that's what we're putting in the P G and E um application. So that's six more than what is uh in the current bid, and that has a price of uh sixty thousand.
So can I just get that clear? The P G and E will not provide electric access for, let's say, level three or a level two or E Vs that don't exist yet, but we're anticipating they're going to have a greater need?
Correct.
They'll only provide for level two?
Well, they will only provide for what we say we are going to install with this project. We have to make a project application with them, serve the building. And we have to give them a line diagram that says everything that is going to be fed. And so the first time we did that, we had future E Vs on there and they came back and said, well, we can't give you power. We have to look at our transformer and our lines out in the street, and we're going to make sure their size for what you're currently installing. We're not going to upsize our transformer because you might install twelve E Vs in the future.
I get it.
I was just going to add that for the Centriment Police, we're studying future electrification of the fleet.
Right.
And uh, right now, level three charger, the necessary infrastructure to run in Darty's rather price prohibitive. So I, it's not really something we contemplated for this project.
Yeah, these are all level two in the in the proposal.
Uh, just a quick question, uh, Julian, on both the um solar, you know, say um the forty kilowatts. Um, you know, I remember when we did our LEDs with Tango, you know, we had a seven-year return on the investment. What what's the estimate, you know, or has that estimate been done?
We, we haven't done that yet. So they're still fine tuning the design of the building and what all the loads will actually be and doing all of those calculations. So that will flesh out with this. Um, again, I know Corder Madera put in their staff report, they were anticipating fifty thousand dollars a year, but I don't, I don't know exactly how their building compares to ours, other than it's a little bit bigger and the solar is about the same size.
Okay, and the same, same for E V. Is there a cost recovery calculation there?
So we have an existing policy where we charge So we have an existing policy where we charge, I want to say it's a dollar an hour. So as a city, we're not a public utility, we're not allowed to charge by the kilowatt, we have to charge by time. And that policy was set. Five years ago, based on what PG&E rates were at the time. So I hear we're a little on the low end. I know there are some places that incentivize it and have it cheaper than that. But if you're talking about cost recovery, we are under cost recovered on our current EV charging rates.
Thank you.
And, uh, Mr. Skinner, can you talk about whether there was any analysis that was done, uh, for the fifteen kilowatt, uh, battery pack? And, uh, you know, how much battery power we might need if we wanted to get rid of the gas generator?
Yes, so the, so we've given, we gave the, uh, the team a couple of parameters to, to look at as far as how to, how to back the building up. And the one was the Corder Madera model, uh, where they have the forty kilowatt hour batteries. That are connected to a couple of circuits in the building. The other scenario we gave them, which is the price that you see here is. For batteries that will run half of the building's lighting and electrical over four hours, which is. The typical PG&E longest length before you get into an event that you know is gonna be significant and it's gonna be longer. And we figured that's a probably a good transition point before where we would bring some other source in. That would be, um, able to ha- handle the heavier, uh, loads. In the building. And we didn't have them do many other scenarios between there and what would be the ultimate, which would be have the batteries be able to run the entire building. And so the other scenario we gave them was we want to be able to run the entire building. If we have a significant event, we want to be able to run it with the HVAC, the hot water running for seven days. What would we need in that scenario? If we didn't have the, either the gas generator or a drive-up generator? And that battery requirement is in the two million dollar range and it's the equivalent of. Three Amazon delivery truck sized battery banks, um, that would have to sit somewhere on the side. They would need their own enclosures, they would need their own HVAC and they would need their own, uh, fire suppression. So that's, and then there's obviously iterations in between. We chose seven days running the HVAC.
So there was no other in-between scenario? Did you guys look at the Corder Madera Town Hall scenario setup?
Yes. Yeah, I believe what we're proposing is the same as, if not better than what Corder Madera, um, has in their building for battery backup.
Well, but Corder Madera has, um, at least forty kilowatts of battery backup?
Yeah.
So we want a fifteen?
No, 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 sorry. It's. It's, it's forty kilowatt hours. Yeah, I believe the fifteen is what is the peak load that it will pass through the batteries. But the battery backup itself is forty kilowatt hours. So you could run it for just under three hours through the fifteen kilowatt, the peak load. So yeah, it's probably mislabeled for the battery backup. It should be the size of the battery and it's forty, it should be forty kilowatt hour. That's what that price is for.
Okay, so it's not for the fifteen, it's for forty?
It's forty kilowatt hours, yes.
Okay, thank you. So, so that's sufficient, let's say hypothetically, to run sort of key entities within the building for four to six hours, depending. On what's needed, let's say there's a public safety power shut up, shut down because today's temperature is a hundred and five degrees. And, um, we've had those where they've gone longer than that. I remember probably twenty nineteen, there was about seventy-two hours where we were shut, where the power was shut down by PG&E. Now they refine their, their systems in the last five years to be more targeted. But, um, if we wanted to create, um, and have a place for, for instance, a cooling center for our seniors. Or a place where people can charge their phones for greater than four hours. Then those batteries wouldn't be, uh, usable for longer than that, sounds like.
Correct.
Okay.
And, and I have a follow-up question. So my understanding is. For, you know, most situations, uh, like you had mentioned, the four to six hours would be sufficient, but there is a. A generator attachment type, uh, being that, that will be installed. So if there is a, an emergency and we do need this for seven days. It's not, sorry, everybody, we can't help you. It's that in that particular situation, we would have to have a, a mobile, uh, gas generator coming that would be able to, to. Charge the building, so it could be a cooling center recharge, uh, center as well. Is that accurate?
Yeah, so a couple of slides along, I do have a specific conversation about the backup beyond the, the battery and the generator question.
Sorry about that.
No worries.
Just one last thing about that, do we have those backup generators for like our fire stations, et cetera, that are available?
So our public facilities, public safety facilities have installed onsite generators, all of them. The better analogy for us would be our pump stations are all set up so that diesel generators can be brought. To, when they're overwhelmed. And connect to them. And in fact, we've relied on longstanding agreements with Hertz Rentals to make sure we're always first in line in storm events. But in talking to other cities, most of them have purchased a mobile generator so that. With growing concerns about climate situations, they have at least one at their disposal. And most of the cities are storing that in a courtyard.
Um, and then a couple of the other highlights, um, on this sheet is, um, there's an exterior. Shade and trellis, the base project has, um. Membrane shade sails on the outside, the two end overhangs of the building to keep the sun, uh, off the windows and from, um, heating up the building. Similar to what you see over at Piper Park, those shade sails. We think there was an architectural and maintenance better option than the shade sails. And so we've asked them for that. And then they gave us a, a first run-through on a, on a concept, which was a little bit further than we wanted to go. So we still think that we want to enhance that shade structure, but it won't be the full. A hundred and fifty-eight thousand that you see on here, but we do plan on, uh, hope, hopefully fine tuning a, a better shading. Uh, solution, um, than the main membrane shades. Adding the children's patio, um, we also thought it would make sense to have the same sliding wall, glass wall opening to the children's patio. Similar to what's already in the project at either end of the large community room. And at the main reading room. Again, the children's patio, if it's added, would have a wall around it, so that they're not gonna be running out into the, into the parking lot, but they can run out into the patio. And then the last two items, one is an upgrade to the siding. The initial project included cedar siding, which looks great the day it's installed, but it's very maintenance intensive. And so, uh, the architects found a product that looks like cedar, but it's thermally treated, so the color is integral to it. So it's relatively maintenance-free. So this is an upgrade to the cost now, but a savings for maintenance in the future. And then the last item is a risk category four upgrade for the library. So as you recall, we did specify in the documents that the community space end of the building needed to be risk category four. So there's basically four different categories of kind of the strength of a building you can build to. And then one is residential, two is public, um, and then three is like an essential, uh, space. And then four is the highest priority for basically, um, a three, a category three building will withstand. Uh, a design earthquake, but it may suffer some damage and it may have to be red-tagged. A category four, uh, is designed so that will not only withstand an earthquake, but it will be fully operational after the earthquakes impact. And so that's a criteria we use for the community, um, space end of the building. So it could function as a, uh, resiliency center. And in looking at the way, um, it's all one building and we started to run into issues of having one end of the building category four and the other not. And so we asked the team for an upgrade to make the whole building category four, because it strengthens the library too. And it does away with some of those issues we may have where if we have an event and there's damage to the library, because it's only, uh, category three, but it's physically the same building. As a community space with that impact, are using the community space? So it just seemed like the safer alternative to build the whole, uh, structure to risk category four.
And Mr. Skinner, can you explain what the actual upgrades are for? To make it a, for a risk category four? What, what are we, what, what are, what are the costs? What does that include?
Well, so the overall cost is the hundred and five thousand that you see on the list. It's basically all of the, the structural members from the foundation all the way up to the roof are strengthened. Or enlarged, so beam sizes get increased, the number of connections, the footings get bigger. So it's basically everything gets a little bit bigger and a little bit amplified so that it's, uh, stronger and it's more able to, uh, withstand an earthquake.
Okay, but, but category three is for public spaces, is that correct?
Yes, public space, assembly spaces that don't, uh, need to be designated as an emergency shelter. It basically protects the building, but the building won't fall down in a category three. But you won't be able to use, you potentially would not be able to use the building because it would sustain damage that would cause it to be red-tagged and not, uh, able to be, um, have people in it.
Okay.
So this is a, um, a summary. The first line is the total. And so this is a little misleading because obviously there were three different options for the solar there and we wouldn't do all three of them. So the next row here is of all those yellow items, it's those items all, um, added up. So it's just under one point two million. Uh, about six hundred and seventy in the library, about fifty-five for the, um, community space. And then four hundred and fifty, that's mostly exterior. Improvements. And then, as I mentioned before, the next available funds is what staff's recommendation comfort level would be on use of existing contingency that's already in the budget. So if you take the total of most likely to be pursued and reduce it by the half of the contingency allowance. The next, uh, row is what the shortfall would be if you were to ask us to pursue all of the, um, enhancements that I had highlighted. And then just as a reminder, you're, the total need to do the entire project, you would have to add that four hundred thousand dollars for the landscaping on top of that. So the total need, need will be just under, uh, one point three. And then, um, related to that, um, we had, looking at the backup power options. So the RFP, when it went out, did include a piped gas generator. Um, and the thought behind that was that we would have it there, we wouldn't have to go immobilize a generator. Um, and we wouldn't have to fill up a diesel generator. But in looking at the back and forth with both our consultants and the contractor. Obviously, an issue with gas could be if the gas mains get shut off for some reason, then we've lost our backup power. So, uh, we started looking at some, um, other options. And also based on some of the CPUC and PG&E regulations about new services to buildings. It's actually, we're able to streamline it somewhat by not having the gas connection. And as we thought about it, uh, more, we, as the city manager mentioned, we, uh, looked at our pump stations and a mobile generator to run this building is close enough in size. That we could use it at our two biggest pump stations, which is Bon Air, um, and Redwood. And so, um, what we looked at some other, um, similar facilities on, on what they've landed on. And most today that have a big backup need are going with a mobile generator and renewable diesel. Is the latest option that most of these newer facilities are going with and it runs about eighty percent cleaner than, um, regular, uh, diesel. And so what we're proposing, uh, to move forward with is to eliminate the gas generator. And instead, um, have a connection point within the building system that we could hook up a mobile generator. To at some point. And again, the other thing this does, as opposed to having a fixed gas generator, is we were just providing. A connection so that we can wheel something up and tie it into the building system and, and run it. Which today we believe the best option is the renewable diesel generator. In ten years, that might be some evolution of solar, uh, mobile device. So we think this gives, also gives us a flexibility that we can evolve our backup technology with. How the, the construction world and the evolution of backup technologies. When those batteries get smaller or solar panel, solar panels are, uh, more manageable. That may be an option to wheel up to the building, um, down the road also.
Julian, good question, um, is there a technology now you had mentioned? You know, the backup battery would be like three Amazon vans. Is that, is that something in principle that could be hooked up now? If, if we go with this, this path of, of creating a, you know, a sort of, um, extensible, you know, agnostic hookup?
Yeah, the tech, the technology is, is there to do, back up the entire building with batteries. It's just a lot of batteries. It's, I think I mentioned it's a two million dollar price tag and it's.
But that's not something that people offer as something you wheel up in emergency. It would, it would always be diesel at this time, you know, that's the only economical.
Oh, a wheel-up option?
Yeah.
Uh, I'm not aware, I know there's been talks of solar buses, like old buses repurposed and filled with batteries and solar panels. But I don't know of anything that's actually online and that's available at, at the moment. But again, it's something we can look to in the future.
Okay, thank you.
So what I'm hearing is that your recommendation or your proposal is that we wire this building with power. Connection point so that if needed, should there be an emergency situation? We can bring in a mobile generator and run it for power. But that would be an, an, a contingency plan that we, um, but will be prepared should there be a need to do that. And at this point, you're recommending an electric, um, I mean, a gas-powered potential generator, but not a fixed generator that lives there all the time. That would be a backup plan, but it would have a connection so it could be brought in immediately as needed.
Yes, except it would be a renewable diesel generator is what I believe is the best option.
Okay.
So a renewable diesel mobile generator.
And is there a specific place on the, the, um, footprint of the building that that makes the most amount of sense for?
Well, we've looked at a couple of locations. I think initially the, uh, generator was proposed to be at the northeast corner of the building where, because there's already a PG&E.
Right.
Box there and that's probably where, uh, the power is going to come in. So it's the easiest point for connection. But now that we've been talking about the mobile generator, we've been looking at, uh, bringing it in through the parking lot. And is there a place over there that we would stage it? It needs to be at that end of the building because that's where the electrical room is and that's where the easiest place to do the connections. But the exact where we drive it up, um, it would take up almost a parking space. So, you know, it may be that the closest parking space to that corner of the building is the best place to, to cite it. Or it may be that we should have a pad off of, off of Doherty, but we haven't worked out that detail yet.
Okay, and it would prime, I mean, if it's on that end of the building, then it would really serve. Well, I guess it could serve the whole building, but you could actually sort of target it to serve the community spaces that may be used for. For sheltering or, or for, um, a, a resiliency center. Uh, and a heat and cooling center or something.
Yep.
Okay.
Julian, quick question. The original plan had a, uh, uh, the gas backup generator. If we eliminate that, is there a cost savings by not having to, to have that?
Yes, there is a, a, a cost savings. So there's a small add for rewiring the electric and putting the hookups in. For a mobile generator connection. But yeah, there's a, a six-figure, roughly a hundred to a hundred and fifty. We haven't worked out all the details and all the credits yet, uh, because they need to look and see what else it impacts in the building. But it's on the hundred to a hundred and fifty thousand dollar range credit-wise.
Is that in any of the, the, the staff report? We're, I mean, can we mentally add another hundred, a hundred and fifty thousand dollars into our, you know, budget because of that? Or should we?
So it depends, that's roughly about the cost of what a mobile generator would be. So a mobile gas or mobile diesel generator would be, so we've left it out for now. But as the city manager will speak to when we get into budget and what pots of money are available for, you know, what, what items? It may end up being a, a net cost savings.
Okay, and just a, another question, are we, I, I know, I heard two different things. One was maybe we should buy a mobile diesel generator. And the other was technology is changing really quickly that, you know, it may be obsolete in five years. Does, do you have an opinion on what, what you're recommending as far as that goes?
Well, so because we'll be able to use this at multiple, um, sites, the pump stations and, um, the commons site. Our thought is if it is, and I don't know if it's gonna be five years, but if it gets closer to ten years, you have a couple of options. One is there is a used, there is a market for used generators, so there would be the potential to get some money back on it. The other option is then if you find there's better technology and there's funds to buy something cleaner. And more efficient at the common site, then your old, um, diesel generator can become a backup to that. Or you can dedicate that to the, to the pump stations and, you know. Or you can dedicate that to the to the pump stations and, you know, gradually over time, as you get more funds available and you want to swap out your generators, then you know, the diesel one always goes to your lowest priority until you've got other ones replaced with a newer technology. So I don't, I don't see it being a waste of of funds, even if it's technology out in five to 10 years.
And and just so I make sure, I heard you're at the cost of the mobile diesel generator is approximately the cost savings of not doing the gas generators. Is that ballpark?
Yes.
Okay.
I would only add, we currently spend $5,000 to $15,000 a year renting mobile generators. So you'd stop spending that money too.
Okay. Fair. Thank you.
I have a question on the EV chargers. Are they bidirectional?
I don't believe they are designed as that at the moment. No.
Okay, maybe we could get a estimate on that because as we're talking about backup energy sources, I think that that is a potential source where someone could use their EV to power and act as a backup, you know, power source for the library or the community center in the event of an emergency. So that would be another power source that we could definitely look at. That would be clean energy.
Can you just, as somebody who's not as familiar with that, that means that the, from the vehicle, it goes back into the system? Okay.
Yeah.
By and how how much is that unless you have like a high end Rivian? What what's the, how much do you get out of a car?
Well, again, it depends on what you want to run in the building. It's not going to drive the HVAC in the building, but it, you know, may span, you know, some of your shorter duration lights or receptacles. But we can have our electrical designers weigh in on on how that works and what the pros and cons are cost wise.
Okay, yeah. Great.
So I showed you the last slide or two slides ago that showed the 1.2 that includes the 400,000 deficit for the landscaping. So I think the city manager and the administrative services director will be getting together and looking at based on what your direction is on how many of these we should be considering, looking at some of our existing funds. I think we've identified that anything battery backup or building backup wise is a potential measure G expense. But beyond that, most of these items we're looking at are either going to be local general fund or tapping into any additional fundraising that the Commons Foundation is able to achieve above their initial 5.2.
Can I ask, or staff, anyone who knows, has the foundation given us any information about whether they've been able to raise additional funds? And second part of that question is, if we wanted to, let's say hypothetically, the there were people who wanted to donate for a particular item. Is that something that we are open to? You know, somebody really likes the, you know, whatever these optional features are. Is that something that we are offering to the foundation and to donors in the community?
I'll work backwards. So to answer the last thing you asked, it's always been our cooperative partnership with the Commons Foundation that anything that's physical, that's about the building and the grounds and the commons is open for discussion if there's a passionate donor who really wants to sponsor a particular thing. What we've shied away from is donors putting operational requirements on the library because libraries evolve over time and we don't want to take money and lock ourselves into an operational position that doesn't make sense over time. So that's been our line. And I think I I know that the Commons Foundation is in in the room and probably they would tell you they've actually had those conversations with some donors about wanting to sort of attach themselves to specific things. Going to your other question, I I had the chance to meet with the president of the Commons Foundation, Ann Morrison, yesterday on several topics. And she told me things are going quite well. And so she expressed cautious optimism and then reminded me to tell everybody, give her a call if you want to make a donation. So I've done my part for tonight.
Well done.
So when we talk about local funds for some of the enhancements, we are also going to look at any balance left over from the bond proceeds to see if we can use them on this project. And there's also one of the benefits of this grant is it's a receive the money upfront grant. It's not a reimbursement grant. So we have the funds from the grants they've been sitting in. I know it's not the bank, it's somewhere and they've been generating interest. So that 125,000 roughly to date and interest can go back into this project. So that can help bring down the 1.2. Also, and so as I mentioned, the city manager and the administrative services director will be crunching these numbers and looking at the balances. And we hope to come back to you at the next meeting on October 16th with a plan on on how to fund enhancements. So that's the, yes, it is. That's the end of my presentation. I'm available for questions.
All right, Julie, let me let me just start. I have a quick question on what you are asking from us today. Are you looking for at the end of this meeting for us to go line by line on those options and tell you what? Yes or no? Or what do we, what are you looking for?
I think a better way, yes and no. I think it would be helpful to make sure we're getting clean direction, clear direction from the council about your priorities. As Julian alluded to, we think there's some pots of money that might be able to contribute to buy these extras. And so what your priorities are will help me make some final recommendations at your next meeting about which pots of money we might draw some of those from. For example, one pot that could be quite intriguing are outstanding proceeds from the infrastructure bonds that we issued. I know we talk about them as road bonds. They're not actually road bonds. They're infrastructure bonds. And I just need to submit to bond council what we might spend it on to see if I can get it approved. But I think based on conversations with them previously, almost everything tied to this project is probably eligible for that. And now folks may be going, wait a minute, we did that for their roads. Yes, but we always said maybe there would be some money left over and we got such an incredible interest rate and interest rate we cannot get today. We'd be about four points higher if we were trying to get a bond today. It's almost, it's almost foolish to give it back when we have money that's that cheap.
All right, with that, let me open it up to council. Council, have any questions for staff?
I I do. And to that point, I I think it's kudos to our city staff in 2020 when that pandemic hit and we scrambled really hard to figure out how we were going to keep Larkspur afloat because nobody knew what was going to happen. One of the immediate things was to refinance that bond. And kudos to our city manager because we refinanced that bond at a really sweet rate that we couldn't get now. And it saved us a lot of money. So it was a really good strategic financial decision. And I just think we need to honor that. Last slide says additional funding. I get emails or questions from community members that there's a lot of grants out there that are available, like from PG&E or from other sources, the federal government, the state government for environmentally focused things. Is that something that is an accurate statement about this particular project?
Yes, but.
Yes, but.
Okay, so we take seriously all members of the community to tell us about grants.
Yeah.
I want to assure people, we do look at grant opportunities constantly. Couple of things to know, a lot of infrastructure grants are not at the scale. They're much larger scale. So that's a challenge one. Challenge two is I require the grant team to analyze how many city dollars have to go in to take a dollar. And a lot of grants out there are matching grants with admin costs. So cities actually putting in more than a dollar to get a dollar. It's quite common. And in fact, sometimes that number is $2, $3. You start to question the value, especially because the filing requirements post taking the grants are often for years
Right.
to come. So we do that whole analysis before we bring grant opportunities to the council. But if folks are out there and they think we've missed one, they should let us know because we'll be happy to take a look.
Okay.
All right, more questions from councils.
Yeah, I have a really small question. So I I am a little curious about the 81,000 curved landscape benches. So we're looking at an $870,000 shortfall and I just want to make sure these are really, really good benches.
It's a really nice bench. No, it's, this was what they put in their proposal when they, as part of the RFP process, and they really wanted to show the connection between the outdoor space and the indoor space. And so where this curved bench was imagined was at the west end of the building where the reading room opens up, the wall opens up, and then you have the green space. And then they imagined a long sweeping curved bench with like teak seating that would go the entirety around that. We've since discussed that there's probably value engineer ways of getting 90% of that effect for less than half of the money. So it's in there as a placeholder as a start. But yeah, I don't, I don't think I'm going to spend $81,000 on a on a bench as nice as a as a bench it is. We'll work with, we would work with the team to add some seating in that location at a
So so it's safe to say that that are 870, there's a range there. I mean, this may be a good, some good news.
Like I said, some of these, some of those numbers will go up and some of them will go down. I'll try and get as many of them to go down as possible.
And and then just as a quick, you know, this was a lot and I, you know, I appreciate the public's patience and all, you know, listening to this. So the highlighted number of lines, I see 1, 2, 3, 4, 5 for Alton enhancements. And then, and these have all been added at the end in 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, if I counted right. So 13 items adding to $870,000 about. And and I'm wondering if we can separate those that have to be done now as part of construction and those that we could do later, like a bench. You know, that's something I I'm assuming that, you know, we have a deadline to use the state money to put up the building, the second building, you know, the parking. I mean, a lot of these things, you can't say we'll do this later. You know, both financially and also functionally. In of those 13, which could we put off?
So anything that's building related is starting to get very time critical. They are working on the construction documents now to submit to a building permit and those drawings need to show the solar and the battery backup. They need to show risk category four. Some of those things, if if we don't decide on those in in the next two weeks, it's going to create a project delay. And as you know, we have a grant deadline. I think the curved benches, the additional landscaping, the habitat garden. It could, to a degree, move out somewhat. It's not as time critical as as the building, but it's still time critical in a sense. For example, we can't submit our Marin Municipal Water District application until we have complete landscape plans that can go in for building review. So it will delay some of the things that we obviously can't put our irrigation in until we know what our planting is going to be and things like that. So I'd say super time critical is anything within the building footprint. Anything that's without the building footprint is not as much, but it's not like we have months to 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 decide.
Okay, thank you. Mr. City Manager.
I know if I can comment, Mr. Mayor, I've seen some prior commentary about this project, both here and at the planning commission, that says this feels very rushed. And I really want folks to understand every one of these items has been vetted for two years in conversations with the Ad hoc Committee and the Commons Foundation. So rushed is a perspective on sort of when you got involved. And we've reported out on some of these items over time. So I I appreciate that and I don't want to diminish people's sense that they haven't had a chance to weigh in. But I I don't want them to think anybody thinks staff orchestrated this as a, we have to make these decisions. We've been vetting all of these things quite a bit through the processes the council set up.
Appreciate that. Thank you. Other questions for staff by council?
I kind of want to echo that because I've been doing this now. I can look in the audience. I could see a few of my friends who've been on these committees now since 2010. I think I started it in 2013. This, I mean, I I looked back on my stack of binders of of the process and it's about eight feet tall. Of all of the public meetings we've had, of all the renditions, of all the comments. I mean, I even brought the original Rose Garden Community Facility Parcel Master Plan, which was long before I was even involved. So this was, I don't know, Brock can probably tell us. But I mean, this is, these are our refinements to a process that has been ongoing collaboratively for over 15, almost 15 years, if not longer than that, by the people who actually did clasp and other things. I know many of the people who are in this Rose Lane Development Plan are in the audience and have been participating a lot in these conversations for a long time. So I I kind of actually just want to piggyback on what Gabe said as far as prioritizing these 18 items. I I think we should always, I I always feel like if we need to prioritize health and safety has to be one of our prior priorities. I was under sort of the understanding that that curved bench is an example was actually actually serves multiple purposes. It's not just as a sitting area, but it's a demarcation of sort of a of a hillside line around the great lawn open space that's been created on the west side, which then creates sort of a physical barrier for, let's say, children from running around outside of that space. So as we work through this process, I think we need to remember who's going to use this space. Who we need to make sure is safe and accessible in this space and prioritize not just things that are cosmetically nice, but things that are also structurally important for the community's safety. So that to the point about the curved thing that, when you look at the, when you look at the image, it was part of that whole conversation was how these curved benches actually can serve as physical interrupters and builder and partitioners. Does that make sense? Okay, I'm done.
Thank you. Council member Andre, did you have any questions for staff?
So you know, just want to go back to the cost estimates for the battery and the solar. And by the way, I am very much in support of sustainability and resiliency. And so I very much support the the solar and the battery and the removal of the piped in gas generator. But I do want to get just a little bit more information about these cost estimates because you know, we've seen some numbers in the public comments where these costs are significantly higher than what market pricing is. And I know you mentioned earlier that there's design costs included in this, but you know, as we're refining the costs, do you think there's more room here in terms of either getting more battery power for the same price or you know, reducing the the cost of the of the solar?
So again, this is a, we're doing this as design builders, as you mentioned, and the system has not been designed yet. They've designed it to a point where they've given us a a cost estimate based on the materials that they've been able to find and their estimates of working on similar projects. There's, there's no contingency, excuse me, allowance in what they've given us. So unless there's some cost savings that they realize, some value engineering when they go through the actual final design or they crunch all the final numbers for the building and find they only need 35 KW instead of 40, then you know, we can chat about, do they actually do the 40 and we get more for for less money? But we don't, we don't have the final numbers yet. We have a cost proposal from Alton based on the parameters we gave them. And then we have a cost estimate estimate independently that was generated by Kitchell that was pretty much the same number. And then, as I mentioned, the Cordon d'Aré bid for their solar was $330,000. So I haven't seen, I saw, I've seen the emails, but I haven't seen anything that's a like project. I know sometimes there's differences in cost between public and and private projects. So I'd be interested if there is somebody that has information on lower cost systems and then we can have our team analyze it, see if it's a different product or a different technology. But yeah, if if somebody has information on less expensive options, we can certainly weigh them out and make sure they give us an equivalent to what our consultants have been looking at.
Great, thank you.
In that process of getting, let's say, a bid, we has as a as a local governance have to do competitive bidding or do we, for something like that?
No, so this project was done as a design build.
Yes.
Contract. So the contractor, the contractor team, the design build team has already given us the price for everything that's included. And anything that changes within that is covered by the agreement. And so they're allowed to still do the design build as their team. I know the city attorney representative is here. She wants to correct me, but yeah, we don't have to go out for anything. It'll be taken care of with the same team.
Yeah. So just to add a little bit more about process, your only alternative really to working through Alton is to not include the project. Yeah. So just to add a little bit more about process, your only alternative really to working through Alton is to not include the project. And then do it as a separate project once you take ownership of the building. Which means any one of these elements that you might say you don't want to do today, but you might want to do in five years. That would be fine. And then you could bid it as a public project, but we won't take ownership of the building till sometime in twenty twenty six. So if you don't include it now, it's not there on day one.
Okay, uh, question for council, uh, before I open it up to public, uh, comment on this. Um, I don't want to make the unilateral decision. We have two items related to the library. Uh, what we just heard, there's a second item on parking. Uh, my gut was to do the, uh, parking separately, but I don't want to make the decision for everyone. So I wanted to check in with council, see what you prefer.
Um, I prefer we did public comment now and heard the public comment. Um, recognizing that we've received a lot of email letters and things that if people, I mean, we all read all those things, so they don't need to reiterate what had been submitted in public comment by a written form, but, um, if we keep them separated, I think that would be helpful for me. And I think there's some people who are here just to speak on this matter.
Okay, and, uh, Councilmember Andre? Councilmember Paulson? Okay. Okay, so, uh, with that, I will open this up to public comment. Uh, I will ask, uh, if you have a comment on the parking, uh, to please hold that till the second item. Uh, but if it is on this first item dealing with the costs and the, uh, upgrades, um, please come on up, uh, tell us who you are. Uh, and, uh, love to hear your comments. I should probably, I think we got a, a lot of comments. I'm gonna see if I can turn this on. Uh, I'm not sure, maybe, uh.
I think it's on. Is it, can you hear me?
No, I've, this, this is for the timer, just to make sure we, uh, don't, don't go to midnight. All right. So, uh, can I get a raise of hands of people who are interested in commenting on this items? We get a feel for timing? Uh, say ten people? Okay, uh, and, uh, can I get a, a feel online for people who would like to comment on this? Can you, uh, raise your hand? Uh, wh- why don't we limit this to, to two minutes? Um, only because we do have another item and we're probably going to get a lot more people talking on the other item as well. So I will start a timer. Uh, I will politely let you know when you got thirty seconds left. Uh, and, uh, ask you to stop at two minutes. And I'm sorry, there's not anything here for you to see. Uh, couldn't technologically get it to work. So, okay, give us your, your name and your comments, please.
My name is Henry Pilger. I live at nineteen Orchid Drive. That's the house directly next to the lot where we're talking about the construction. Julian, um, you said that, that you're thinking of putting a gas diesel gas generator about fifty feet from my bedroom.
Okay, hang on. Uh, I'm just gonna ask you comments, please not to staff, to council. Okay.
You, you understand what I'm saying. There's a gas generator that's going to spew out noxious fumes, noise, and it's fifty feet from my bedroom. We sleep with our bedroom window open. This is not going to make me happy. Um, I've been involved in a number of construction projects and I know that running underground conduit during construction is very insignificant in terms of cost. And I don't understand why you would put the gas generator hookup and, and the gas generator right on the, uh, the east side, which is next to my house. Instead of on the far end of that lot where there's an empty Lucky supermarket. The noise and the fumes would be far less noticeable over there and you could hook it up with an underground conduit. Seems simple to me. That's all I have to say.
Okay, thank you.
My name is Sandy Goldman. I live at the terraces at Rose Lane. I'm actually representing friends of Cortimadera Creek watershed here tonight. And it's unclear to me what part of the landscaping, well, backing up. We have seen plans that show some of the landscaping in green and some of it browned out. About a third of the site said, no, this is, you know, not covered. What does the four hundred thousand dollars cover in terms of landscaping? I mean, if that isn't, if no one can pony that up, will nothing be planted on the site? Or is it? Yeah, you can, you can see where I'm coming from. It's unclear to me what landscaping is funded and what isn't.
Thank you very much.
Good evening. Uh, I'm Bruce Ackerman from actually Fairfax and on the town council, but I'm just speaking as an individual. Uh, I appreciated the, uh, the, the mention of the bidirectional EV chargers. And I just wanted to highlight that because that, that is, uh, probably the next technology really in terms of portable storage to be able to extend the, the time in which the building can operate without needing a generator. Uh, yeah, there was a question that came up as to how big the batteries in EVs are. My very small Bolt, uh, Chevy Bolt is, uh, has a sixty kilowatt hour battery. That's pretty much the minimum. So that would be, uh, one and a half times larger than the battery that, that was spoken of as a stationary battery. And you can of course pull another car up and replace that. So uh, we're doing a similar thing to that in Fairfax. We're in the, in the design phase at this point. The, both the bidirectional chargers and the bidirectional EVs are just starting to come around now, but they will. Uh, that within the next couple of years, it looks like most of the EVs are going to be bidirectional. There's even a state bill to try to make sure that happens. So I would strongly recommend that you plan for that as far as, uh, one, one, uh, some of your, one or two of your EV chargers at least should be the same kind of wiring. But just plan for that so that you can, so that you have that capability.
Okay, thank you.
Hello, my name is Paul De Silva and I'm a local educator environmentalist. Uh, uh, live over on the other side of the creek, on Cortes Lano. And, um, I am also one of the co-founders of the Brent Biodiversity Corridor Initiative and I may be the only person from Larkspur going to the upcoming COP sixteen, uh, United Nations International Biodiversity Conference in Cali, Colombia later this month. So I'll, uh, remember you all when I'm there. Anyway, I just thought as we're going to this wonderful educational and environmental, uh, breakthrough, uh, I support it entirely. But we need to take advantage of all that it can teach, uh, and in the, it teaches about ourselves, about our environment. And I thought I'd maybe invite some of our long-term, uh, residents, Larkspur residents, those who have been here for more than a million years at least. And to maybe just say a few things about what they could teach us. So here, this is Ms. Toyon. She has a local indigenous, uh, Bay Area name. Uh, has normally, uh, if one of it gets bigger, wonderful flowers, fruits, leaves, uh, medicinal value and supports over four hundred kinds of insects. Wow, that's what you get after a million years of evolution. Then I thought maybe I'd bring over here. Oh, this is, uh, this is Mr. Buckeye. And, um, what can I say? Well, Mr. Buckeye here, uh, has been used for, for food from time immemorial here. Uh, and in fact, this very area that we're talking about was mentioned in the archaeological report as being a center of Buckeye, uh, concentration. And a good friend of mine who worked for Cal Fire says, this also teaches us, uh, this, this plant teaches us about fire because it's the most intelligent tree in all of California. It loses its leaves when fire season starts. And so I would just use these as a couple of examples as we talk about building the library, think about the interior spaces and the exterior spaces for what they can teach us and for what they can help us about this important concept of, part of biodiversity, uh, part of sustainability, which is our local biodiversity. Thank you so much.
All right, thank you.
Hello. Good evening. My name is Ilario. I am one of.
I'm Shad, what was your name?
Ilario.
Ilario.
I'm one of, uh, Henry's neighbors. Um, what I did not hear tonight is what consideration has get, been given to being a good neighbor? Uh, we all live right next to the current power source and where the generator is supposed to be going and the hookups. Um, if Henry lives fifty feet away, then one of my neighbors is eight feet away and I'm twenty feet, feet away. Um, and, and I like to hear uh, things in terms of what, what is the nuisance to us? What is the greater impact, environmental impact, you know, the noise for, for something that it, it originally sounds like this, this is just a library. Now it, there's talks of being, uh, uh, shelter, you know, in place or for emergencies. You know, in, so in short is what has been collected as far as the opinion in the neighboring, uh, residencies, right? Um, I was warned last minute of this meeting and I showed up. Um, but, uh, um, I also would like to hear rather than a single-minded opinion, an outdated um, way of viewing how to approach an, an emergency with a diesel generator. If you look at the schools around us, Redwood has solar rooftop, you know, parking, um, infrastructure. Hall does not have anything, um, with that type of design or technology. The library design does, seems not to have that type of design and technology.
All right, I'm, I'm gonna have to cut you off because that's the two-house case.
What about, you know, getting or partnering up with the other infrastructures and harnessing solar and via conduit feeding into the library? So just more, more options, more creative options.
Okay. Thank you for those comments.
Hi, uh, I'm Andy Blaveld. I live on the boardwalk and been in Larkspur for many, many years. Um, and it's just great to see this coming almost to fruition after first twenty ten, as you were saying, and I know uh, that actually for decades earlier, people were talking about what, where can this library go long before this site popped up? So we're, we're almost there. Um, but a couple of items clearly from the comments are not quite there. Uh, that was the same at the planning commission. Um, the commons and the parking, which I guess we're gonna talk about next was one of the items. The sustainability was the other big item that, uh, the planning commission, a lot of people raised concerns about and they're raising concerns again. Um, and there's a third item that again, we've heard about tonight with landscaping. And staff actually at the planning commission kind of gave us the key to solving these problems is, you know, the landscaping is as Julian says, outside the building doesn't need to happen right away. Um, we can do things after the building's up. Um, so we, and again, we'll talk about the parking, uh, later, but the, um, the idea of a resiliency center is great, um, but we haven't had one to date. We haven't had one since twenty ten or before. And if the big one hits tomorrow, you know, we, we, the library's not in place, but we have one that's, you know, a bullet, literally bulletproof right across the street. Um, as staff has talked, just mentioned today at the police station. So the community is not without. The concept of resiliency centers is very new. There's a one state pilot grant with limited funding for this ventilation centers as a, as a port, one kind of resiliency center. So that's still very evolving. Uh, there's no need to get that going right away. Both of these, both the parking and this, I think can be pulled out as separate items and come back. Again, that's something that if planning commission staff said, the original idea with solar was to plumb the building for it and then you can come back later. Um, so, you know, I just think we're making a long-term investment, you know, for this that past this prologue, this will be a hundred years at that location for the library. So we want to kind of lean forward. So the idea of a diesel-powered clean air center just doesn't seem like the right investment that most Larkspur citizens want to make right now. Um, and I just want to say, I'll, is that the time?
That, that's your two minutes here.
I was just gonna say, I'll send in some comments at the PV. Um, I work at Solar and I.
Appreciate that. Thank you.
Good evening. My name, my name is Ted Horton. Uh, we live at fourteen Willow Avenue and have since nineteen ninety-five. Uh, I provided written comments to, uh, the city manager, public works director and the staff. So it's, my point is very simple, actually. It's just if you save a dollar, Ms. Morrison doesn't have to go out and raise that dollar. So it's, my comments were all based looking at, you know, resources that are available to owners to, uh, save and buy smart and be climate smart. But good on you for the library. Looking forward to checking a book out there in eighteen months.
Hey, thank you.
Hi, my name is JJ Andre. I live on Sycamore Avenue. Um, and uh, I think what we saw today is a big improvement from what toward the planning commission. I'm speaking most of sustainability at the moment. Uh, the addition of the solar panels and the batteries, the clarifications tonight from staff that it's actually a forty kilowatt battery, not a fifteen. So there, there's some good stuff that's happening on sustainability. I think there's more room to go on the cost and thinking through what the costs are. There's, we're, we're adding things, but we're not deleting things. We should be deleting the generator. The generator shouldn't be there. Uh, one of the previous versions said it was a five hundred thousand dollar generator. Tonight it sounds like it's dropped to a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. But that should be a deletion. It's great to hear that we currently spend about ten thousand a year on renting mobile generators. And maybe we needed to keep that in mind before we go buy a generator. Um, there are bidirectional charging infrastructure being built out as we speak. As we heard Fairfax is doing it, many other places are doing it. Um, the pricing that's on the solar and the battery in here, we've compared them to what recent projects in California cost, and these numbers are way high. They're close to that eighty thousand dollar bench high. These numbers should be lower. I would encourage staff to work with their consultants to look at current pricing. Solar and batteries have dropped tremendously in price over the last ten or fifteen years, straight line down in cost. Prices we're looking at that are in here reflect prices from twelve years ago. So there's more work to be done there. One of the other benefits from a cost and saving a dollar so Ann doesn't have to raise a dollar is when you have a battery, it's not just about the resiliency. It's about when the sun's not shining. If you don't have the right size batteries, you're gonna be paying PG&E for your energy. If the batteries are the right size, separate apart for all the great resiliency goals, we're going to be generating our own electricity from the solar into the battery and then using them throughout the buildings. Um, we don't have to pay the PG&E rates. So not only do we not need to buy a backup generator because we've got to deal with Hertz, but our electric usage is going to go down. The other thing that hasn't been mentioned, but it's in a lot of the comments, the clear story windows should be operable, meaning they can open at night and they can night flush. That will reduce the HVAC cost, electricity cost. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Hey, I, I, I'm just gonna re- repeat something that staff had said earlier, which is staff seems to be very willing to uh, accept information. If anybody has information about, you know, comparable projects, you know, how we can get the solar power cheaper, batteries cheaper, staff is more than happy to, to listen and, and, uh, uh, hopefully implement those suggestions into the project. All right, is there anyone else, any other comments on this item?
And, and just to be, because we've heard of several comments about the generator. Just to reiterate, it's an emergency use only generator. At, at that's the, that's the anticipated use of it. It's not a, it's not an everyday use. It's not a twenty-four hour a day, everyday type of use. It's envisioned as a backup should the power fail for an extended period of time. And if that happens, everybody else's power is out all over the place probably, and we're all, we'll all be dealing with an emergency situation.
Correct. It would be mobile. It would not be stored at the library.
Correct. It would be mobile. It would not be stored at the library side.
Right.
Uh, we would have a, a, a plan for when do we bring the mobile generator in? And this is not for your, the power's gone out and it'll be back on by noon. It's not for those types of events. It's either if we get a PSPS that where they're forecasting uh, an extended outage, or if we have some a disaster that's um, of the size that the, we know the power's gonna be out for an extended duration, then we would mobilize it in. But the multi-layered system that we're now providing in with the batteries allows for the batteries to take care of those, you know, every now and then when the power goes out. So this is, this is not gonna fire off every time that the power goes out. It will have to be brought in um, and manually connected um, up to the building.
Got it. I think that's important to-
And the other thing is the location. Somebody mentioned 50 feet from the sense, we haven't, we haven't decided on what the exact location will be. As I mentioned, it may end up being the parking lot or it may end up being on Doherty because it's gonna be wheeled in with a, with a truck. So we have to look at that and the, the location is, is gonna be function of where the connection is to the building. And then there's also a certain length of cable ordinarily that you have from a generator to the connection. So we'll be looking at that and we're aware the latest generators are, they call them whisper quiet, but I will admit they're not whisper quiet. But they're um, uh, the latest technology of generators are a lot quieter and a lot cleaner than the older models that folks are probably uh, thinking of. But we're, we're aware of the proximity to the, to the neighbors and we'll be looking at that when we figure out where we would stage a generator if it turns out that we would bring one in.
And, and it's also an important um, uh, tool that we could use should there be uh, a pump station failure um, when in the corner of Dare Creek area during a heavy storm where a lot of rain is coming down and it's a high tide. And we want to protect the homes and the, and the um, road surfaces by enhancing the pump station. It could be utilized at that time.
Correct.
Got it.
All right. Yeah, let's, uh, if we could, let's do public comment and then we can go through and I'm sure we're all taking notes. And then we can address the issues raised in public comments. All right. Next speaker.
All right. Uh, good evening, council members. I'm David Mahler. I live here in Larkspur and I'm speaking for myself tonight for, not for a group. Uh, so I want to start off by saying I totally support the library project. Uh, and I'd like to comment on a couple of the sustainability features. So bottom line is, it seems pretty clear that the library should have rooftop solar and battery storage to provide uh, its operation power, backup power and resiliency power. And nobody else has mentioned it, so I will. This totally is consistent with Larkspur's Climate Action Plan 2030. Uh, from what I understand from experts in this field, doing this is entirely feasible and can likely be done at less cost uh, than the savings from deleting the 180 kilowatt fixed generator, uh, which had been uh, previously contemplated. Uh, also, as has been touched on, solar plus battery storage will pay for itself over time uh, through reduced electricity costs, reduced operating costs. And ultimately it'll provide free power when it's totally paid off. And uh, I do believe there are grants available that help, could help defray some of the cost. I want to note, I totally agree with staff's updated proposal to install the backup power connection. So a mobile generator could be brought in. That seems like totally uh, the way to go here. And uh, it, it seems unlikely though, that that would be used or very rarely used. And I want to point out something that nobody else has mentioned. With the solar plus battery storage, when the pot, line power goes off, your solar collectors are still charging those batteries. It's not like you go down, down, down. That's it. They get recharged by the sun. They are the most resilient power source we could possibly have here. When you can't get gas, you can't get electricity, you can't get diesel, we still have the sun coming in there. So um, I, I am inclined to question a little bit the cost estimates from what I understand. And I wonder if this could be an opportunity for value engineering to really dig into those cost estimates, even under a design build contract. Is there some opportunity there to lower uh, the cost?
All right, David, I'm sorry, your time's up.
All right. Oh, well, bottom line, I hope you'll really uh, support these sustainability measures. I think it's what Larkspur really needs. Thanks.
Thank you. Uh, anyone else? Public comments? Uh, come on up.
Seven Meadowwood. Good evening. I, I was out all of Friday and most of yesterday. Uh, got back, saw the city manager's notice um, and decided I had to do something this morning. And the order of it was write you an email about design. And the second thing was read tonight's um, presentation. I should have reversed it. I'm sorry. I wore your eyes out reading something that relates to design. But I thought that's what this was about until I read later. I just was under a lot of pressure. So sorry, I took your time and exhausted your eyes. I will come back later, but when will the meeting be on the design feature that in effect the you're taking up with the planning commission did approximately? Do you know?
Uh, let me turn that over to the city manager. Do we have-
There is no meeting. The planning commission has final authority on design review. Oh, okay. Well, then maybe I wasn't so premature. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Other comments? Okay, seeing none, let's go online. Uh, Allison, do we have anyone with their hand up? If you have, sorry, if you're online and you would like to make a comment, please uh, raise your hand and we'll get you in order. Okay?
Yes, first speaker. Go ahead.
Am I queued up?
Yep, Tom, we can hear you.
Yeah. Okay. Great. Great. Well, uh, you know, Ted Horton and I, I'm, I'm Tom Flynn, 10 Willow Avenue. Been in Larkspur for over 35 years. And uh, Ted Horton and I uh, spoke with staff and, and you know, we're pleased that staff is very welcoming of, of input. And uh, you know, in particular, we both shared the objective that the, the diesel generator would be used the minimum amount. So essentially there's a lot of ways to get there and, and you know, as, as you were saying, uh, you know, it, it, we want to avoid uh, have even having a conflict with a major storm where perhaps the generators needed for pumping water at the same time. So in general, there are ways to get around uh, requiring um, bringing in a diesel generator. And in, in West Marin, I've been working with the fire department with uh, this, the Shoreline School District. And we are, we are essentially with PG&E and MCE developing plans that allow the school, the fire station, et cetera, et cetera, to remain powered indefinitely with solar and batteries. And, and uh, and, and that's involving work with a nonprofit clean coalition and another organization called Circa, which has done microgrids with a number of cities in the Bay Area. And we just want to encourage the council to empower the, the city staff and Alton as much as possible to look into this latest technology, look into bidirectional charging, look into, you know, the opportunities that are available to minimize what you have to have operational in the, in the library. You don't have to have all the HVAC operating. You, you essentially tier your highest priorities in terms of critical services, in terms of, of the, you know, the, the, either the outlets or the be, ability to power medical devices. And maybe keep ventilation operating. So you're cleaning the air rather, and, and, and just staying in the order of maybe 30% of your demand. And that will greatly reduce your battery requirements. It'll reduce your costs. And you're, you're essentially, you're gonna be, just let me encourage you, please take advantage of some of these experts that are available that we, you know, we'd like to introduce to this process to, you know, to make some of the things possible.
Thank you. Thank you for your comments. The, the uh, time is up. We appreciate your comments. Thank you.
Next speaker. You can unmute yourself.
Uh, good evening, uh, Larkspur council members. My name's Jody Tims. And I live in Fairfax, um, but I am on the Fairfax Climate Action Committee and 350 Marin, a climate group, a local climate group. And I'm so excited for you all about this project and envious because um, as you, as I'm sure you know, Fairfax and Nevada's libraries, which are already built, um, have received a grant two years ago to do a really thorough evaluation of turning them into resiliency centers with solar and battery and chargers and bidirectionality and everything. Um, and those were incredibly insightful. You have an op for us. We of course don't have the funding to move forward to make a lot of those changes now. We're looking for state funding. But it was all facilitated through Dana Armanino at the county, the sustainability team. I just want to be sure that your staff are well connected to the folks over there. And also San Anselmo is obviously doing a ton right now and evaluating, turning, putting in a microgrid as is Fairfax and getting a lot of assessment. I think you have this opportunity for a state, an utter, utterly amazing state of the art library that to me, some of these enhancements you're talking about, as others have mentioned, should really be baseline requirements. Um, solar, battery, and especially bidirectionality. All EV fleets are, I mean, all fleets, municipal fleets need to become EV in the next few years or over time, as soon as we can get them there. And that backup power is also really super important. So I just wanted to um, encourage you to continue to look as others have at what's really possible and what's coming and create a building that you can say in Marin, you guys are way ahead of everybody else. And this is what all, all the other cities and towns should, should work towards. So thank you very much for all you're doing. I know it's complicated. I've just barely started to take a look at what you're doing and I certainly don't have the expertise, but I do have an all-electric home. The Marin Green Home Tour is coming up, so that's for more residential. But there's just some great work that can be done and that we all need to be doing um, in our cities and towns to move our climate actions, our climate action plans forward and reduce our emissions. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Judy.
Next speaker. You may unmute yourself.
Good evening. This is Julie Elekta. I live in the terraces. Um, and I am uh, speaking here for the uh, Rose Lane Master Board where I also serve as a director. We submitted a comment letter and I won't repeat what's in there. Some concerns about the gas generator. I wanted just to reinforce the comment that Ilario Gallo made who lives in the uh, houses along Doherty. We have uh, in those houses, I know everyone in those houses, there are older people. There are people like uh, the Ilario's family with kids. There's very little space between the east end of the library and the fa, the fences and those properties. I mean, it's, it's um, I, I'm surprised by the story poles at how close it is. And so I do want to reiterate that I want the city and I want our staff to take a close look at not just the generator, but any other issues that are going to really invade the privacy um, of that neighborhood. And that's my comment for this evening on this portion.
Julie, thank you.
Thank you for any additional raised hands from our Zoom audience members. And there's no further public comment.
Okay, uh, with that, um, I'll take one quick look around the room. Anyone else that has not made a comment that's here tonight on this item? Seeing none, I will close public comment. Uh, thank you, everyone. We appreciate uh, the input. I'd like to go through some of the comments we've heard. Is, would anybody on council have an item they'd like to start with, or would you like me to go through my list? It's up to you.
Uh, I go, I'm, should be pretty quick. I uh, again, just want to appreciate such a good turnout here tonight. I think 20 people online and you know, we obviously all care about this project. Um, just, just to kind of see if I'm, you know, reflecting and representing. Uh, you know, part of what we're doing tonight is looking at priorities. And um, my kind of uh, evaluation criteria are listening to what the community wants. Um, really thinking about safety. Um, thinking about sustainability and a lot of that is greenhouse gases. You know, some of that is also biodiversity. Thinking about our money, you know, are we really investing? Well, are we getting the best cost, you know, for, for our dollar? And then thinking about the future, you know, growth development, maybe the library will grow, you know, what's gonna happen to the community? So on that note, just to be brief here, um, I think the major uh, piece for me and, and I'm curious to hear my colleagues, you know, direction of staff is to revisit our budget. So we have a shortfall, 800, uh, you know, some thousand dollars. And um, you know, we've heard different opinions and then we're, you know, I'm very glad to hear the value engineering and other ways of looking at the 870,000 dollar budget shortfall will be considered. Um, there's a bunch of minor points. I think you guys will bring them up, the, you know, details of bidirectionality. Um, you know, these are obviously part of a larger whole, which is, you know, part of, you know, part of this library that we sit on today is a problem because it's, it's earthquake, you know, uh, not safe. You know, kids aren't safe here. It's not accessible. You know, the parking is a real problem in the back. I'm really trying to understand why we're even moving and why this library isn't good enough and to make sure the new one takes care of those issues. So, so on that note, um, just for investment, I think the solar panels to me seems like it's something that would pay itself off. You know, if we can go for the max wattage there and you know, have the sufficient battery and that, these are formulas that can be worked out. MCE does this a lot and, and other, you know, providers. Um, I think the, I, I just want to um, echo what um, council member Way said. I, I live in Heather Gardens, right by the pump station, and I've heard that diesel generator. And I really want to take Rose Lane residents especially to account. And you've brought certain concerns. But, but just think in this entire year of 2024 and all of last year, 2023, when have any generators gone on? I think they go on once, twice, three times. I mean, it may happen. Who knows with extreme weather, but, but we're really talking about, you know, something where we bring in emergency and it may be city vehicles if we have bidirectional a lot of batteries. But whatever it is, I think these are small windows. So I, I'd like staff to look at some reasonable suggestions if we can run conduit to put it away and it's not expensive. It doesn't bust the budget. That's great. You know, some of the things that were said about the, you know, the plants, if we look at the landscaping plan, you know, there's a way to bring in biodiversity and that doesn't bust, bust the budget. That'd be great. But overall, you know, let's look at the budget and bring it down. I think, you know, the investment of solar and also, I'm sorry, one last point is the earthquake proofing. You know, this building isn't earthquake proof, getting it to that category. I think if you look at, look at the neighbors here from, you know, um, Blue Rock, from Heather, from all these neighborhoods. I know I sit on Cinder block. You know, we Jeff, just don't think about earthquakes enough. And to have a civic facility that's really earthquake proof, I think is worth that part of the investment. So I'd consider not skimping on that. Uh, that's all I have.
Other thoughts?
Well, I, I concur with what you said is to priorities. Um, I, I think looking at the solar, looking at um, the resiliency center, making sure that it's resistant for level four. Um, looking at the conduits so that we can do reverse. I don't even know how that works because that's not my skillset. But I think looking at those kinds of sustainability factors, I would like to see that. I think we can delay things like the glazing of the children's uh, light uh, windows and other issues that don't um, rise to, those, those strike me as things we can add later if, well, let me know if they're addable later, once the building is occupied. But I think if we take this list of 18 items, prioritizing the ones that are energy efficiencies and safety efficiencies um, fit with what I think is our expectation of this building at this time. Adding things like additional children furniture and um, outdoor space for concrete pavers and the additional trees. We need more trees, but that additional cost probably can come lower in the priority setting. And hopefully the fundraising with the Commons Foundation can add those enhancements. I think there was a comment about that there across the street at the sec, Central Marin Police Authority, there is a similar opportunity for a resiliency center. I, that has not been designed in that capacity. I think people need to understand that. Um, I have been in that space when we've had a public safety power shutdown and there is minimal amounts of electricity. Um, electrical sockets even for people to um, plug in. Most people were sitting on the floor. Um, and the size of that actual community room is about two thirds of the size of this room alone. It's a, not a very big space to accommodate the needs of not only um, the residents who live in this part of Larkspur, but the residents who live on um, all the other areas of Larkspur. Um, and adjoining areas. As far as Hall Middle School, it's my understanding that that is uh, known to be a recovery center and a place for sheltering. But they also have a school population that's pretty significant that will be needing a place to, to be. Um, so we can't rely upon that necessarily. And I think this is an opportunity for us to really design in um, a community space that can be multi-purposed for resiliency and emergency. Hopefully we don't have them, but we all know that they all exist. So does that make sense of, of sort of priority? Hopefully, we don't have them, but we all know that they all exist. So does that make sense of sort of prioritizing? Or, well, we'll get to it.
Yeah, we'll, we'll, we'll have, you know, council, we'll discuss the priorities. Let's get more, more comments from Councilmember Andre.
Great. I agree with the previous comments. I think, you know, one, this plan is dramatically better than what we saw at planning. I am very supportive of the solar and the battery backup. I am not, I would like to see that this building is zero net carbon, which means no fossil fuels. So I would, I don't, I, while we may put in a connector for that, I just feel like, you know, I, I would like the, the building to be truly green. Okay? So I'm a few things that I would like to see, though. And I agree with the prioritization. I think that there are definitely items on this list that probably fall to tier two. And if we have additional money through the Commons Foundation, we can, we can talk about those lists. So for me, it's the sustainability features would be priority one. And with a secondary priority would be the risk category for upgrade. But with respect to the sustainability, I think that a properly sized system will give us a lot of resiliency. And I think that's where we need to spend a little bit more time doing some analytics and research into what's the proper size battery that we need for backup purposes. And I think, you know, we've all acknowledged here that I think solar panels will generate a return for the city in, in the long run. So I think that's, that's a good investment. I think bidirectional EV charging is going to be the next generation technology that will allow us to have a clean and renewable energy backup. So I think that running the conduit, I don't, is not, is not expensive. I mean, if we're going to spend $60,000 on EV charge, you know, running conduit for, for eight EV charging spots, I think that we need at least a couple of those to be bidirectional. So I'd like to look into that. And then lastly, the, the motorized windows, clerestory windows for the increased ventilation at night, just to flush the building of heat. I think that will save on, ultimately will save on our energy costs. So in general, I am supportive of the sustainability items. And I think that we need to, one, again, do a little bit more analysis around the costs. I would like to better understand what the offsetting costs are if we don't include the fixed piped-in generator. I think we should see some significant cost savings from that, and I like to better understand that. And then I'd also like to look at any state grants, state, federal, and other grants that might be available for solar and battery. Thanks.
All right, just some quick comments, then we'll bring it back to council to go through the different priorities. First of all, huge thank you for staff, ton of work doing all this stuff, laying this out so beautifully. Julian, appreciate it. Second, a big thank you to the public. And that is because we had a plan and we heard comments, and we changed the library based on the comments that we heard from the public. I think we are going to be unanimous with solar, which was not in the original project. I think we're, you know, unanimous with the batteries. I think we're unanimous with the hookup. Although, we'll, we'll talk about that, but I think, you know, I, and those, those are things that, that were brought up by you. So I just want to thank you for that. The biodirect, the bidirectional charging, I think we are also unanimously asking staff to just look into that. I don't know if staff has an answer at this point, if that is an option, what the cost would be. But I think that's something we're all interested in. If that's something that maybe for the next meeting, we can have some, some more information on. And by the way, if I'm saying something wrong, just take up the mic and stop me. I know, scared me. A, as far as we've heard comments, and first of all, I want to just make clear, there were some comments about the generator, and the generator now is not in the plan. You know, so we are not going to have a generator, you know, on staffs, everyone who was concerned about the location, the noise. It's going to be used very rarely, again, only for an emergency when we have to bring a mobile one in. But I would like to ask staff, maybe for the next meeting, if we can get a little better understanding of the location for the hookup and the reason for the location. You know, so that we can better understand what, what we want to do with that. As far as the landscaping, there was a great question. We have $400,000 for the landscaping. What does that cover? And obviously, we have, it doesn't cover everything because there's another line item for trees. So I'm not sure, and is this, if you could just explain that a little bit?
I'm going to turn it over to Julian in a second, but I do want to emphasize sort of, because I constantly try to run numbers. I think the trees need to be thought of not just as an aesthetic landscaping investment, but a lot of the trees are going to provide shade to cool the site. So they have an added benefit and should be thought of as having that dual purpose and the dual investment.
Okay.
Now I'm going to turn it over to Julian for sort of what broader landscaping issues are.
So the plans that were submitted for design review included a base landscape plan, and they also included, as the speaker mentioned, some areas outside of a base area and some trees that were kind of shaded a different color than, than the main trees. So the project, as it is funded today, doesn't include any of that landscaping. It basically would put the base, the irrigation, anything we need to get into the street, and then it would grade everything so that it drains properly. And we would put in either very low maintenance plants or some sorts of hydroseed mix for erosion control purposes, because we can't leave the site dirt. The 400,000 would then get us up to the darker colored items in the landscape plan. So that's when we start getting into the, the natural plant, planting beds and, and the trees. And then any additional fundraising beyond that is when you start to get into those shaded areas. The brown area becomes a habitat garden, and then there's additional trees that were shown that were shaded that are those, that additional tree item. So there's, there's different levels, but the basic question of if we don't get the 400,000, then it'll be minimal landscaping with the intent that we don't have erosion and we don't have dirt getting into the, into the storm drain and the creek.
Okay, perfect. Thank you for explaining that. At this point, I think everyone's commented, what I'm going to suggest, I have a list just from hearing everybody up here, what we think is probably level one, level two. But I'll go through them and just make sure I'm right. Maybe we could all just give a yay or a nay. What I'm hearing is priority number one, or in the first category, is going to be the solar and the batteries. Is it, can I get a, does anyone disagree with that? Okay.
Just a question that maybe, before we do this, you have in the last line of the staff report that the final budget is due October 18th, which is our next meeting. And I know we are under a timeline based on construction material, construction documents, et cetera, and our grant and our funding responsibility to make this project go through. Are these additional changes that we're putting forward reasonable within the next two-week period of time to meet that October 18th deadline? Or is that a fungible deadline?
So based on the direction that we received tonight to prepare to come back on the 16th with a budget amendment, that's not going to, we're going to move, we can move forward based on your direction tonight. And then if we get to the meeting on the 16th and we do the budget item, and it's, well, on second thought, there's only this much money in that fund, I don't want to do that, then we can stop doing that. But based on your consensus tonight, we're going to move forward with the enhancements, the design of the enhancements, we're not going out and building anything. But we'll keep moving forward with the design so that we can get them in the construction documents. And then if there's a reverse course, we'll stop after direction on the 16th.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so the solar and the batteries.
Just, yeah.
Go ahead.
A refinement. So just to frame it, because I, I think we're all, you know, in favor. But the, on the slide number 11, the 40 kilowatt solar was 300,000, and the, the 15 kilowatt battery was 150,000. So that's more than half of our shortfall. And I merely want to say that I think the, the, you know, for me, if there is, you know, any kind of trade-off, I would, you know, try to put more money into the solar. I mean, I think of the solar as essentially, you know, I just ran a quick number, you know, every hour that a 40 kilowatt runs is about 100 pounds of carbon. So it's 200 tons a year. And, and the extent to which we can get that in right away, and then the battery backup to me is a capacitor. And, you know, that can be modularly put in. I mean, that seemed to be one of those items that can be done later. So it does create availability issues in the beginning. But if there's any, any need to trade off in funding, I would just put a slightly higher priority on the solar panels and on the battery. But I'd ask Julian to, to validate that, you know, at amateur engineering session.
Well, the only, the only piece of information that I may not have been clear on, and I want to make sure that there's understanding of, is that if we don't have batteries, but we have 40 KW of solar on the roof, if the power goes out, the building will not have power. You need the batteries in order to serve the building on a power outage. It's not enough just to have solar. It's the same issue with the bidirectional EV charging that's coming up. Your car does not charge the building. Your car charges batteries in the building that would then drive the power for the building. So what works in a power outage is you need batteries to run the building. Those batteries are charged by solar, or those batteries are charged by EV if you do bidirection. But if you were to put the solar up and not approve moving forward with the batteries, then you would have no backup if the power goes out, other than rolling up your generator. I just wanted to make sure.
No, I understand. I'm not saying we can't do batteries, but, but the 15 is there tiering there. Like, I, you know, I, I think the question, you know, someone mentioned how much their Chevy Volt had. So, so it doesn't seem like it's going to take you very far. You know, at which point you're basically, you know, this is emergency talk, because we use the battery, you know. Well, anyway, I'm curious about tiering there.
Yeah. So again, the, the 15 KW was a typo on the battery backup, because that was an option for the 15 KW solar that we had. So as we added in the 30 and the 40, the battery backup item just never got updated. So that's why it says 15, but it would be 40 kilowatt hours. So the issue with adding batteries is they take up space and they have clearance requirements because of the, the heating and the explosion potential that these batteries have. So a, as it is now, we're having trouble fitting this amount of batteries into our current floor plan. So once we start adding, looking at adding more batteries, we're not just talking about the cost of those batteries. We're now looking at adding square footage to our building. So it's, it, it kind of depends on, on how far you want to go. But you're, if you added twice as many batteries, then in theory, you could run your building for twice as long. But so that's where we've given the guidance that we think we want to be able to run the half of the building for four hours, and that's what this price represents. So again, if we wanted to do it for eight hours, then it would be twice as many batteries.
So the typo is 40 kilowatt hours, but the cost is still 150,000?
Yes. So these, these were the prices that Kitchell provided us, because the numbers from Alton came in after I did this presentation. Their numbers are very similar to this. Their solar number is actually a little higher and their battery numbers a little lower, but the net was still 450 for the complete system.
Okay, right. Okay, so we are on the same page. Again, no objection to, we're going to do a category one and a category two. Category one is stuff that we're approving right now. Everybody's on the same page. The solar and the batteries, we're, we're giving direction to go forward, correct? Okay. Next thing, category four upgrades to make this earthquake stability. I believe that we are all on the same page, that that's something that we feel is a priority. Is there anyone that disagrees? Okay, Drish to staff, that's something that we feel is a priority. We would like included as an extra. The next thing, the EV chargers, increasing the number of EV chargers. Are we on the same page? That's something that we believe should be done in this category one, giving authority at this point? Well, I think they're looking into the bidirectional. I am hopeful that they will be bidirectional. But my understanding is we don't have enough information at this point, whether we can do that, what the cost would be. We're going to get more information. Right, so, so we'll get more information for the next meeting. Okay, then my understanding is a decision that we have to make by next meeting is the siding, I would assume, because that is on the building itself. And what I heard was anything on the building itself, we need to do sooner rather than later. So I know that is not a safety issue. But I believe it's a maintenance issue. When I heard, it's going to be, what we have currently in the plan is going to be more expensive to maintain. If we want to do this, we should give them the go-ahead today.
I think so, because it'll have long-term benefits for the integrity of the building.
I, I agree, but I want to run it by everybody, and if anybody has any comments on that issue, please speak now or forever hold your peace. Hearing none, let's put the siding upgrade in that category. I believe those are the only things that are in the building or on the building itself, unless I have missed something. Is there something that I have missed? Can I ask staff that you definitely need a decision on today?
There's a couple of smaller items, which is the sliding door between the children's library and the meeting room, and then the sliding door in the children's room that opens to the patio. And they're both less than $20,000.
I would like to take those two items and maybe meet with the Commons Foundation. There, I, I've seemed to recall some conversations suggesting to me that children's room does generate a lot of enthusiasm, and there may have been already some discussions they had about some of these items. So why don't we bring that one back to you, Mr. Mayor?
What about the diesel hookup?
The diesel hookup, yeah, the generator hookup, I think we ha, we have to either have a generator hookup or put a generator in. And I think all of our preference is to put the hookup in. And the hope is that over time, instead of that becoming a diesel generator, it will be some solar generator when technology improves. So I think the hookup is, is, we need that. I guess that the next question, though, is, are, are we buying a portable diesel generator? And is that something that you are asking us to decide today?
That would be a separate conversation. When the dust settles, we'll look at what's cost-effective continuing to rent or to purchase.
Perfect, okay. So having said that, the next item I have is additional trees. First of all, the landscaping, the landscaping, I think we need, we don't, we're spending all this money on a building, we don't want it to look ugly. It's, yeah. Yes, well, I'll, I'll, I'll get, oh, actually, the windows are part of the building itself, so we should be in. Okay, so you're talking about the, yeah, you're talking about the windows that will open and close to save money with the.
So there's clerestory windows up near the roof. And so if they're operable, you know, like skylights that open and close, you can ventilate the, the building when it's cooler at night and nobody's in there, you can just flush the building, and so.
All right, so I'm going to ask staff, because that wasn't part of this report or presentation. I know I've spoken to staff about that. There were some cost issues and questions whether.
We didn't have the information when we went to print. I think Mr. Skinner might have some info for you now.
Okay.
Yeah, so I apologize. I should have mentioned this when I was going through the presentation. There were a couple of items we didn't have pricing for, the clerestory windows was one of them. So it's actually the, the last item on the other enhancements table, and it has an X in the column because we didn't have the price for it. We've got preliminary pricing in from the contractor, and so there's 24 of these windows. The total cost to make them operable remotely and programmable is in the vicinity of $60,000.
And is there an estimate of the energy savings that we will have by venting the room? And how much less we're going to have to heat?
That has not been modeled.
Yeah, I've sort of haven't pressed the team to do that analysis, but we can. I mean, I've sort of thought as the, all of these have a return, right? Your, your question is how long? But, you know, when you're building a public building, at some point, you have to say, we're making this cash investment now, knowing that in X number of years, it will pay for itself. And this would be one you could put in that category. We can run that analysis for you to kind of give a ballpark estimate, but we, you know, maybe take estimates about the weather and the, and the electricity. At the end of the day, I think, since we're doing the building on a cash basis. At the end of the day, I think, since we're doing the building on a cash basis, I think we'd say to you, that's a, an interesting addition to the building and, and probably worth spending knowing you'll, you'll make it up over time.
Uh, okay. Question, is this a decision that we can add later? If we want those windows to open or does it have to be done during the construction phase?
It needs to be done now. It's, they all require hard wiring back to a control center because they automatically will open and, and close. So it's, it affects the electrical layout and a lot of other components. So it needs, it's an upfront decision.
Okay. So sixty thousand dollars is the cost. Um, Councilman Andre, I'm assuming you're a yes on that?
Well, well, uh, I, I'm, what I would like to see if possible at the next meeting is like a full layout because I'm losing track of how much money this is all costing. So.
Yeah, that was, that was actually the intention of the item was more to get your priorities. So I thought I would, I think, we didn't have that number at print, but I, I think we would put that on the list for you to evaluate in the context of the budget for all the sustainability elements.
Okay. Yeah. All right. So let's, let's put that on. So, so we have that. And then, um, any, any other thing council have on the building before I move into landscaping and trees and?
No, I think you did.
Okay. All right. Uh, and the, the other thing that was mentioned were the sliding doors were taking that off for now. And we're going to talk about that a different time. That's fine. Uh, then the landscaping.
Can I just pause there? Um, Julian, were the sliding doors like these operable windows, something that have to be done now? I, I wasn't sure if those are easy to add later. They have to be done now. Yeah, yeah. Yeah. Cause I, I would encourage the council just to look at the price. I mean, I, I think we're talking thirteen thousand dollars for the slider. And I, you know, actually working in this industry as an IT consultant, I, I think this is, you know, this is called the twenty-first century design, and they've been doing them at hall and at all the schools. And I, I really don't think we want to be pound foolish here and penny wise, thirteen thousand on one. Um, maybe the, the children's area patio, can you speak on that? Is that one that can that be done later? Or, or how does that one, that same thing? So that's, and that's a forty-seven thousand dollars. So, um, I, I just, I mean, if, if we're weighing in as four different voices, I, I would encourage that we don't deprecate that, that we actually prioritize that.
I'm going to put both those on that list. Mr. Mayor, I'd like to go have that chat with the Commons Foundation, and then we'll talk about them at the next meeting in terms of how they look in the budget.
Gotcha. And, and let me ask you on that same note, uh, for trees and landscaping, is that something that, uh, the Commons Foundation, to your knowledge, you know, donate a tree type thing might, you know, uh?
I don't think Ms. Morrison's here anymore, but I do see one of her partners in crime is back there. Jean Friedel might be one of those comment, but I think it's been more of like a generic support the city's ultimate landscaping plan, but all that.
Mr. Friedel, would you care to come up and comment? So the, the question is, how can we best support, uh, the Commons Foundation um, in trying to partner with the city? And should we reserve some of these items which the Commons Foundation may find it easier to raise money for trees or landscaping or children's rooms than it would be for a solar battery or something like that?
Um, well, obviously jazzy things are easier to sell. Um, it's harder to get funding for a battery versus a children's patio. I think that's pretty easy to understand. Um, our current funding program says landscaping, but when we've been going out into the community, um, and I will say successfully so far, and we're, um, anticipating, we've partnered for an additional million dollars. That was our second goal, um, for landscaping, but we are looking at the extras and we have been having meetings with the city and some council members to meet some of the shortfalls on some of the specialty items. And slider doors is one of those things that has come up. Um, I can't commit to what would not or would be something that would be approved, but we're definitely looking at funding those things to make it just a little more special. And funding whatever shortcomings come of budget to make it functional as well. So if there's needs, as Dan knows, we're trying to meet those shortcomings in budget.
All right. Well, thanks, thanks for explaining that.
I think we can sit down in the two weeks between this meeting and the next one and come back with really robust explanation.
Perfect. So, so, uh, thank you. Uh, and I agree, we'll, uh, let staff and, uh, Commons Foundation handle those issues. And does staff have sufficient direction at this point? Or are there other specific items you would like us to address?
Looking back on the comment list, I think we hit everything.
Okay. All right. With that, I will close this item. Um, does anybody want to take a five-minute break to stretch at this point? Let's take a five-minute break. We'll come back at nine o'clock and, uh, get that last item in. Well, actually it's not the last item, but we'll get the next item. Recording in progress. That's our queue. All right. So we are now on. Business item eight point two. Nope. Sorry. Eight point one B. Uh, eight point one B is discussion of project design with respect to parking. Can we get a staff report regarding the parking, please?
Good evening. Um, again, Public Works Director Julian Skinner. Um, so this is the second part of our, the Commons Project, uh, discussion. This one is focused on aspects of the parking design. Um, this is the site plan as was included in the drawings that were presented to the planning commission, uh, last week. Um, so this, um, this site plan is oriented with north straight up. So Doherty runs across the top of the page. Uh, then you have the building setback from Doherty. And then immediately south of the building, you have, uh, the parking lot, which contains thirty-two, um, spaces. Um, and then, um, in conjunction with this, but not included in the Alton project. So as I explained previously, we have six separate projects based on the funding. Uh, there's a separate project that, uh, looks to improve Rose Lane coming from Doherty up to the driveway to the, uh, new library. And in conjunction with that, construct thirteen parking spaces on the little sliver parcel that the city also owns, um, across from the library parcel on the other side of, um, Rose Lane. Um, so that's the parking that we're showing that will be allocated to the, uh, new building is the thirty-two plus, um, thirteen or forty-five spaces in total. Um, and so, um, what we looked at in, um, determining how many spaces we wanted to provide, um, on site. Um, if we look at the municipal code, there is a requirement for libraries of one space per five hundred square feet. Um, there is no community space definition, um, in the code, but, uh, these are meeting spaces. Um, and we'll have a building occupancy, um, that they could be used as an auditorium. So we, um, looked at, uh, factoring the parking as a, as an auditorium. So if you look at the square footage of the building that we're proposing, which is a sixty-eight, forty-five for the library and the twenty-one hundred for the, uh, meeting rooms, um, it turns out to be a total of ninety-eight parking spaces, which is quite a bit more than any of the previous master plans um, showed. And again, uh, with the understanding that the auditorium, um, is based on the gross square footage, and there's some hallways, um, there. So what we, we decided in the, in the plan, we were going to not provide the full ninety-eight, but some fraction of, uh, of that. And so, uh, forty-five is the number that we landed on based on that criteria. The other criteria we looked at was what was in the master plan. So in the master plan, they looked at the site as a whole. Uh, this was done back in twenty thirteen. Um, and they evaluated, um, initially that, uh, the building should have about three spaces per thousand square feet. And back at this time, the master plan contemplated a twenty thousand square foot library. So there were a few differences. The other major difference in looking at the parking in the master plan was it recognized the availability of on-street parking adjacent to the new building. So it allocated thirty spaces on public streets surrounding the library that will be available for public parking. As that subdivision developed, none of those thirty spaces are available. There was no on-street parking, um, on Rose Lane when it was built. Um, and the spaces on Orchid are on a, on a, what turned out to be a private street. So if you look at what was in the master plan, you take the, the two point five spaces per thousand square feet, which what is what they downgraded the requirement to, given the off, uh, the on-street, off-site, on-street availability. Um, twenty-three, uh, for the building plus the on-street, uh, it would have resulted in fifty-two parking spaces available to the building. Based on the square footage, it would have been much more, uh, on the twenty thousand square feet. But prorating it to our building size, it would have required us to provide fifty-two. Again, we're forty-five, which is a little under that. And again, um, you know, we're aware of incentives to have people walk and, and bike. And so there's a, uh, there's a trend to underpark sites to promote walking and biking. So we're weighing that with also, as you look at the site, as I mentioned, there's no nearby parking alternative. If somebody comes into this parking space and it's full, you cannot park on Doherty, you can't park on Rose. And, um, once you get into the subdivision, those are private streets. And so we don't want folks pulling in, not finding a parking space and then having to circulate around the block. And ultimately maybe end up at Piper is the closest public, um, parking spot. So we're weighing providing enough parking spaces on site with, um, you know, the trend of underparking to promote, um, bike and, and walking to, to sites. So that's why we didn't land on one of those code numbers, but we're somewhat under those code numbers and the master plan number.
Julian, if I could just chime in real quick for you, for the benefit of some of the newer council members in the public, this debate's been documented. It's been going on since twenty-ten, uh, what code interpretations to use. The methodology referenced in the first slide was what the planning department was recommending in twenty-ten. The, and is, I think, the most literal interpretation of the code. And then the, um, group four was the consulting firm that did the master plan, and they came up with the idea of three uh, per thousand is sort of a, a compromise interpretation of several different aspects of the code.
So that's the background on the parking count. The next conversation is the parking layout or, um, location. So what we landed on was having the parking lot central to the site lining up with, uh, the driveway to, uh, reduce the amount of asphalt, um, on the site, um, so that it connects directly to the driveway. And then also, uh, most importantly is the proximity of the parking to the building. So this is not only an ADA issue, but it's also an age-friendly and a parents with stroller-friendly design, uh, to locate the, the parking as close as practical, uh, to the front doors, um, of the building. Um, and then highlighted here, um, off to the left is the green space that we talked about before, where the circular or the curved bench, um, would go that's connected to the outdoor space connection from the, from the building. This is, uh, what we've received in some of the public comments. Folks are curious as to why we moved away from this design. And what I've been, uh, trying to explain to folks is this, uh, sketch that I've shown here is exactly as it was in the presentation we made when we received the, uh, proposals as part of the RFP process. Each one of the teams put together financials and details of what the building would look like inside and out, and how they envisioned the site to work. And this happened to be the one that, uh, Alton and Nolan Tam provided. Um, and so they did have this central green area and they had the parking lot pushed back towards, um, Orchid. The building, for the most part, um, is the same. Uh, but as we explained at the time, this was not locking the design and this was just part of what they presented in the whole package, um, where the selection committee picked this team to move forward. And as you'll recall, um, we were able to look at the other designs that came in. And the selection team was able to highlight some of the things they liked in some of the proposals and some of the things that, um, they didn't like in some of the other ones. Uh, and because we paid, um, the other teams a stipend, we're able to, uh, take concepts from their design and morph them and use, um, what Nolan Tam had presented and work with the team and end up with a, a result that we thought had the best pieces of all the, the proposals that we came in. Um, the other two proposals had the parking lot closer to the building. They really, um, showed that connection between the, the parking lot, um, and the building. Uh, and they had the outdoor space, uh, connected better to the building also. So we liked the Noel and Tam's, um, outdoor space that's at the west end of the building because it flows from the movable wall. But we thought the one out in the middle where it just lines up, um, with the front door and it kind of separates the parking area uh, for the building was maybe not in the best space. And so as we worked, uh, through with the team, this design evolved to the point where the parking lot, uh, morphed and came closer, um, to the building. Um, and then past iterations, we can, um, look at here. Um, this is from the master plan. So the two preferred alternatives in the master plan did both have the parking closer down to, to Orchid. Um, as part of our conversations with some of the stakeholder groups, the neighbors in particular, uh, would prefer the building, the parking lot not be right up against the street because of headlight, um, issues. Um, and then both of the preferred alternatives did have a green space. And one was in this area where we're proposing the parking. And the other alternative actually had that green space, uh, closer to, to Doherty. And then, as you know, the Commons Foundation did do some fundraising efforts, uh, some sketches, sorry, for fundraising efforts. And they had a phased concept where they would do an initial, uh, library of about five thousand square feet. And then there was a phase two and a phase three. And so their initial phase one of let's build the first phase of the library actually had the parking lot in the same location as, as we're proposing. And then as they added on to the building in the future, they've moved the parking lot and opened up that center space for, uh, for a green. So the parking lot and the green have been shown in different locations, um, over time. And again, um, in considering, uh, where the parking lot should be, these are the kind of things that we've looked at. And these are things you may want to consider. Um, accessibility, uh, primarily ADA. But again, it's also, uh, an, an age-friendly and all users, uh, proximity of the parking to the building. Uh, central Marin fire requirements. If we don't have the parking lot close to the building, then we're going to have to do something other hardscape-wise, uh, to provide fire access, um, to the building. Um, it, uh, facilitates the book service drop, the book drop location, the trash enclosure, um, are all better suited when the parking lot is closer to the building. Um, and then other things to consider is the cost of the two alternatives. Um, and then, you know, if we do decide that we want the central green space, uh, then are we looking at multiple parking lots? Do we want a little satellite parking lot that's closer to the building that has the ADA stalls and then have the main, uh, further in the back? And then again, we mentioned, um, considering the, um, the needs and the requests of the Rose Lane, uh, neighborhood. So those are some things to consider as we look at where the, uh, best location for the parking lot might be. As we're looking at, uh, how many spaces should we provide? Uh, we want to make sure that, um, we also taking into consideration the needs of the building, uh, when the meeting, uh, rooms are, are in use, not just the daytime use of the library. Uh, we will need to think about the EV charging. And as you heard, we plan on having eight EV stations. So, uh, as the parking lot shrinks, keep in mind that the proportion of available non-EV parking spots goes down. Uh, if we stay with eight EV. Um, and then, uh, we need to also, uh, consider access and parking for residents that can't bike or walk to the property. Uh, I know we've heard from some folks in, in Greenbury who would love to walk or, or bike to the, to the library, but it's not feasible for them. Um, and then also, um, kind of the, the newness and the popularity of the library. We're anticipating a high, um, demand. It's close to school. So we know we've got opportunities for, uh, children after school and parents after they drop kids off at school, um, that may impact the parking need beyond, um, some of the numbers that we would initially, uh, think. Uh, and then, um, as we look at where the parking lot should be, it also triggers a conversation about should we have that great lawn space? And so some of the things to, to consider in that, uh, determination is, uh, whether that meets, um, current water use policies. There's both, um, local and state policies that speak to turf, uh, and non-residential and non-athletic, um, installations. and non-residential and non-athletic um, installations. And then the maintenance of, of a lawn, if we were to put it in that central um, location. And then um, we've heard from folks about uh, the landscaping and how they want biodiversity and how turf would, would fit in with the overall biodiversity of the landscape. And then also the creation of footpaths through the lawn. If we were to have this uh, big uh, green space in the center of the uh, of the site, whether it would end up being just traversed by folks going shortcutting from the uh, from the parking lot um, to the building and maybe from one end over to um, through to the uh, Lucky Shopping Center. So those are kind of some of the things that you may want to consider as um, you uh, think about how many parking spaces we should be going with. Where's the best location for the parking lot? Uh, and also whether we want to incorp- incorporate a larger central uh, green into the project. That was last slide.
My only additional comment for the council process-wise. This would require amending your design. If you decide you want to change some of these elements, then that amendment would need to go to the Planning Commission. So it's just a process aspect of this.
Okay, thank you uh, for that report. I appreciate it. Uh, let me bring it to council. Does council have any questions for staff? Councilor Repalson?
Thank you, yeah. Try to be brief again. So, so the, these are really minor. But um, Julian, on the, on the layout here, I'm, I'm just wanting to be sure that the north access to the library from Doherty is very walkable. So anyone who's coming from Hall, it's just a short shot over there. Because when I think of multimodal, you know, we talk about, a lot about bikes and others. But you know, is it really easy to walk in from northeast, south and west?
Yeah, so there are two main entrances to the library, one in the middle of the building that faces the parking lot and one on the Doherty side that's kind of mirrors that in the layout. And then there's a wide walkway that goes out to um, then kind of a curved walkway that would go through the landscape area. One leg of that curved um, walkway goes directly to the Doherty-Rose Lane intersection that would be kind of the direct shortest route for anybody who's using the crosswalk at that signal at Larkspur Landing. Sorry, Larkspur Plaza and Rose uh, to get to the, to the Doherty entrance. And similarly, anybody coming from the high school would be able to um, veer off onto the curved path off of the Doherty sidewalk into that uh, front, front door.
Okay, great. And then, you know, another mode of transportation, of course, biking. I mean, I, I imagine this is very minor, but I haven't seen bike racks anywhere on the drawings. And then also, is there such a thing as e-bike charging? You know, to incentivize people to come with their e-bikes? Yes, so that, I mean, public, I mean, I know you can charge it in your house.
Yes, the um, the bike racks are required by code and will, they're not shown in detail on the site plan yet. But as you can see at the entrances, we have fairly wide concrete areas that are wider than the doors. So um, the thought was that there's some area there for some outdoor furniture and for some bicycle parking. We don't actually have any bike EV chargers in the program, I don't believe. But we can see what the, what the added cost may be for that.
Yeah, I mean, because I, I just would offer. I would just offer that, you know, considering the population. Like, if, if we get real good traffic from Redwood, from Hall, I mean, we're talking about hundreds of patrons potentially, you know, that just hopping on their e-bike or walking and, and reducing load. You know, it's just something that staff could look into. And then the last two things, I mean, I get just sort of left the big questions for last. Obviously, parking number and parking location. I think that's really where the public comment and, you know, more of the issues. On, on the parking number, I would just offer up for reflection. Again, I, you know, came into this meeting thinking about the library that we're leaving behind and the future that we're trying to build. And one thing that snagged me forever, especially, you know, as I voted to keep City Hall here, is, is, is the limited parking here. So, so the idea that don't build it and they'll bike uh, is something troublesome because I think, you know, we have not had good parking access here, and I haven't seen the bike racks full or a lot more people walking. I think people just don't come to the library. So the number that we settled on of, you know, whether it's the forty-eight or the fifty-two, I mean, I, I just want to remind people that, and I've been, you know, pretty in touch with the Greenbury population and the elder population, that that's really something to consider. And um, and then my last is actually a question, Julian. So the third to last slide uh, reads here as the council discusses with respect to location. You know, there's ADA, Central Marin Fire, book service, book drop, all these things. Can you just kind of, you know, summarize? This is a really good summary, but I think, you know, staff has sort of moved against putting the parking at Orchid and then putting it back in the middle. You know, which of these is really driving, like Central Marin Fire? I mean, is, is it really a statutory requirement that the parking? Or, I mean, why are we bringing that up? Is that just, it's easier to fight fires if the parking lot is in the middle?
So the, the Central Marin Fire has a uh, parking requirement that they're uh, basically have to be able to pull that truck up to within a certain distance of a building so that there's a hose-length requirement. And where the parking, if the parking lot were to be back on Orchid, it would be too far away from the building to service it. So you would need a little splinter area of asphalt that would come off where that main driveway is. It wouldn't have to be to the extent that the parking lot in the middle was. But the design would have to incorporate some sort of additional hardscape parallel to the building and south of it that's closer um, than the parking lot is. So it's, it's just a, it, you know, it, it potentially could break up some of that big open green space, and it also would have a little cost associated with it.
Okay, the truck, just the truck also has to be able to turn around, which actually is, I think, almost as constraining as proximity to the building.
Okay, and maybe you could say a little bit more about drainage utilities and pathways. So by putting the parking lot in the middle, costs are going down or maintenance is going down? Or ma- just give me some quantitative framing there.
Yeah, so most of the utility connections onsite are coming from Doherty. So as you look at the parking lot, it's going to have storm drain underneath it. It's going to have electrical connections for um, the lights. Those utilities all need to go to Doherty uh, to be served. So it's a shorter run to take those from the middle of the site to Doherty than it is from the, from the backend.
Other questions for staff?
Thank you. Um, all right, thank you for the presentation, um, Mr. Skinner. So my questions are around the, the code and the calculation of the park, the number of spots. So I, I noticed that you used the auditorium. And as far as I know, there's no fixed seating in the community space area. Is that correct?
There's no fixed seating inside the building, no.
Okay, so I, I, I'm not sure. I mean, that, that feels like it's a very, I mean, auditorium has fixed seating and it's dense. And, and the code specifically says that it's for places with fixed seating. So I, I would, you know, cha- I, I would question why we were using the auditorium and not, say, business uh, business and professional space, which is in the code right above this.
We'd need to ask the retired planning director from 2010 to tell us why she said auditorium, but that was what she advocated for in 2010. So it's been sort of the standing assumption by staff.
Okay, well, then I'll just note that in the code right above this, there is a line item for business and professional offices, which would be closer to a meeting space, in my opinion, because it doesn't have fixed seating. And that is uh, one, one space per two hundred and fifty square feet.
I think the general point is we're already deciding we're not going to program parking to code. But in the absence of pointing to something in the code, it's arbitrary. So i- if the council wants to pick another category and point at that category, you, you can do that.
Right. I mean, my point is that the nu- the numbers that we're all looking at, in my opinion, seem very high. And so I'm trying to figure out, you know, if we're trying to figure out the right number of parking spaces for the new library, um, are we gearing it off of, you know, a line item in the code that really, in my opinion, may not apply? Because it's, you know, we don't have auditorium seating in the new, in the new community rooms.
Well, again, we're not, we're not proposing to program to the auditorium standard. We're pro- proposing a program quite a bit less than that standard. So we're proposing underparking by that standard. But if you want to pick a different standard, that's the council's discretion. Because really, th- since it's not a clear, there is no clear meeting rooms in a library standard. We're stuck with trying to find, and this is what we do all the time, right? We try to put the square peg in the round hole, and that's what we have here.
All right, but, but I think to your point, Stephanie, I mean, we have had meetings where we've had to go to like Creps Conference Room because even though it doesn't have fixed seating, we were able to accommodate a hundred people who could come in there. And this type of space that we're designing, this community space, probably can accommodate several hundred people, depending upon what its use is for, whether they're standing, seating, listening to a lecture, having a party. So I, I think we need to anticipate that it will have a high utilization similar to what an auditorium is, even if it doesn't have fixed seating.
Okay, well, I, I just thought would be, my next question is, you know, what is the use? That, what's the anticipated use of these community rooms and what sort? Because I think what some of the um, public comments have pointed to is a concern that there, you know, there might be some large events being held um, at this, at the new community room. So I, I wanted to understand, you know, what, 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 what type of use we were planning on renting the community rooms out for? And then, you know, I think we, that would inform the, the parking and the amount of parking that we might have. Um, and then my other, you know, point on the, or my other thought on the parking is if we're renting out these spaces, um, and we have, you know, a, a couple hundred people at these events, there is potential overflow parking at Piper, at the city park, at the city parking lot across from Left Bank. I mean, there are other, I, I think, you know, we don't want parking on Rose Lane. And that was the other thing that um, I think the, the Rose Lane um, public comments brought up is I think their concern is off-street parking on Rose Lane or Orchid. And I think they were concerned um, that we were contemplating overflow parking. So I do just want to clarify that we are not going to be, we are not contemplating overflow parking on Rose Lane or Orchid.
I think the point of that slide is to clarify that when the master plan three, three per one thousand standard was applied and the number of spaces were assigned to the building, the assumption of the group four, the consultants at that time, was that there would be parking on two streets that didn't exist at the time we were doing the plan. And so now that the streets exist, one, Rose Lane wasn't designed for on-street parking. So, and it's just not really standard, you, you can't do that. And then Mr. Skinner keeps saying politely, private street. Orchid is a substandard street because it's a private street. It's not a normal width street. It's just wide enough for one car to park and for another car to go by and pull into a driveway. That's not what we would require of a, a pub, a publicly designed and maintained street. It works great for a neighborhood like that. I'm not saying it's not a good design. It's just, it wasn't designed to serve the public. And in addition, the HOA is correct in saying they're using almost all of that parking for their residents. And so um, we are not proposing people park there, but the master plan did. So when people look at the master plan and they look at the number of parking spots there, they need to account for the fact that the master plan said there was a lot of on-street parking that isn't there.
Right, okay, so I, I just wanted to clarify that we are not contemplating having parking there and that there is overflow parking nearby off of Rose Lane and, and Orchid. Okay, is that correct? There's overflow parking at Piper and also at the city parking lot across from Left Bank.
Well, I am not qualified to say what's close by. So I will leave that to you, Madam.
Okay, okay, great, thank you. And then with respect to the um, with the ADA issues, and Mr. Skinner, I think, you know, maybe you alluded to this in the multiple parking lots. It is possible to structure it so that we have ADA parking lots or parking spaces and loading and unloading closer to the building and, and potentially fire um, truck access, but then push the remainder of the parking a little further away. Correct? A little further away from the building.
Yes, you could um, have a, a, a multi-tiered parking arrangement where you had whatever you chose to be close to the building, the ADA spaces, a book drop-off um, closer to the building, and then the remainder of the spaces further back.
Okay. And then my last question on the, on the number of parking spaces. So at the Planning Commission, the, the plans were, were released with, I think, the thirty-two spots in the main, in the main parking structure. And then at the Planning Commission meeting, um, it was um, made known that we could add another thirteen spots um, on the strip next to Rose Lane. I- is that correct?
So.
Thirty-two and thirteen?
Yeah, so the, the design review at the Planning Commission was for the design-build package for the building and the site that included the thirty-two spaces as part of what Alton and Nolan Tam uh, were doing. As we were putting that presentation together, we recognized that we weren't capturing the thirteen spaces that are outside of their contract in a separate city project, but part of the larger Commons project that we've been envisioning. We've shown an exhibit dating back a few years where we had contemplated widening Rose Lane and adding parking spaces in that sliver. And they're part of that budget that was adopted. And so we added that slide into the Planning Commission presentation because we wanted to show the parking in context and remind folks that we were planning also on putting the thirteen spaces in that sliver.
Okay, but that information wasn't, that information wasn't given until the Planning Commission meeting. Is that correct?
So that's, that's been part of the proj- project since the adoption of the master plan, and it's been shown off and on in diagrams for many years.
Okay, but, but the actual number of spots was not determined until, was not given until the Planning Commission meeting. Is that correct?
No, the master plan right here has.
I, I, I can't answer, I, that iteration of the project, that was probably the first time we showed that particular iteration. But I, I'd have to go back to look and see what we showed to, to prior.
I'd have to look at the Planning Commission staff report to know for sure.
Okay, um, and so is, is the funding for the strip parking for the thirteen spots, is that part of the sixteen million? Or is that, if it's not part of the sixteen million, where's the funding for that coming from?
It's part of the sixteen million.
It is part of the sixteen million?
Yes. Yes.
Okay, but it wasn't shown on the plans originally, and it got added later?
That's not part of the design-build. So we did talk with the council about it when we went over the array of projects that, that are the entire library program. But it wasn't part of what's required for the design-build approval. So it wasn't in plans that initially were shown to the, to the community development staff. And then we added it to that slide so that people were aware at the Planning Commission meeting that it was in the project. Because I think we started to realize not everybody's been with us for our journey for the last several years.
Okay, all right.
By smear way.
The journey, journey has been interesting and long and t- and uh, tortuous at times.
A long, strange trip.
So um, uh, I think Alton has presented um, a reasonable approach to where this parking lot should be, and I'll tell you why. Not everyone can drive and, and not everyone can wa- walk and bike. And we have to remember that Larkspur is not just this downtown corridor. It's five different districts. It is the North Magnolia area, it's the historic downtown, it's the Greenbury Boardwalk area where Trader Joe's and the Mobile Home Parks that we have residents who live there. It's the Greenbury Hills where our mayor lives, who, which does not have a walkable distance to this library. And it's also the entire Bon Air Hillside where the Tamil Pious is, and all of the apartments and complexes that are in there are Larkspur taxpayers. And they have just as much of a right to come to this building and to utilize these community spaces and to utilize this library without the expectation that they should either walk or bike because many of them can't. And I think we need to recognize that that's an important uh, piece of our population that has to be um, respected for their need to actually drive a vehicle, even though we would like everybody to take public transportation, they won't always. And I'm reminded of um, back in the day when we had this conversation, and here's the master plan. And Theo Graff, her husband Don Graff, for, um, for many years was a city council member. I think Mr. Holmes remembers him. He was on the library board, he died before I even took this role. But Theo came to one of these meetings and said. But Theo came to one of these meetings and said, I live in the Greenbree Hills, I am an active part of this community and I cannot get to a, a library without driving. And you need to honor and respect that there are people who want to participate. And I think we need to keep that frame in mind. I think we need to keep the frame in mind that although I can look around this room, three-quarters of us could probably walk from our residences to this new site. Many people who are Larkspur residents, Greenbree residents, who are paying taxes into the sixteen million dollar project can't. And we need to honor that they need to have as much accessible space as possible. On my second point about this is that when you look at the data, who comes to our library? Many of the library participants not only live in the Greenbree zip code, not just the nine four nine three nine, but they live in the two zip codes that are in Greenbree and Kentfield. We have always talked about, at least in the last eight years of this rendition, that this is a regional a library that's going to serve the Lower Ross Valley. Not only is it going to serve the schools that attend the Lower Ross Valley, but we need to have uh the residents who live in the Lower Ross Valley have an ability to um access this public space. So I, I get the point of wanting to have um more walkability and more drive and less drivability, but this is a lot less um parking than what the master plan showed. The third point that I think we need to remember is this is not just a library, it's community spaces and community spaces have a higher demand need. There will be um a yoga class, let's say, or, or a children's exercise class with toddlers and sixty kids are going to show up with their associated adult who comes with them. And that requires that we have space for those um people to participate fully in this space. So I, I like the plan where it is. Last fourth, the fourth point and the last one I'm going to make is we have um really had to have a relationship with the neighborhood to be as accommodating to the needs of the neighborhood within reason. And this particular design accommodates the needs of a neighborhood that is going to be surrounding a known community center when they bought those places. But we, I think, have to compromise with where the location of parking that will be um have an advert, potentially adverse effect on a neighborhood is. And this centering it minimizes that. That's my points. I have a few more, but I'll leave.
Okay, um, I, I am going to actually withhold my opinions until after we have public comment.
So two, two quick questions that.
Sure.
No, um, I'm just on the cost, Julian. So we have one million dollars, I believe. And the drawing has the parking lot in the middle. You know, so we had discussed it could be at Orchid or it could be split, you know, some close, some not. What does that do to the cost? And then, you know, the only other question is expansion of the space. Do any of these parking designs, you know, constrain future expansion? Because, you know, many of us hold the hope that, you know, six or eight thousand can become twelve or fifteen thousand square feet of, of library.
Yeah, I mean, as far as constraining space, it depends on what the vision is for an expansion. We did ask all of the teams to make sure they had a site layout that would accommodate another ten thousand square feet of, of space. Um, and so in the site plan, it's either over at the east end of the building or it's down by Orchid or it's in the middle of the side, depending on where the parking lot is or is not. Um, but yeah, it doesn't, it, you know, it depends. And, and again, things are, things are movable, right? As you saw in the, the Commons uh fundraising sketches, they actually had the parking lot shifting depending on where the, where the buildings were and i- in the different phases. So I wouldn't really say it, it's going to lock in uh what a future expansion will be. It'll have a slight uptick if you determine that we want to move the parking lot in a future phase because we ended up building the parking lot where we want Phase Two. But we can't really know what that is, so I can't really say there's a, a pro or con in, in the layout.
So if you didn't want to move a parking lot, which would be the best for future expansion, having it on Orchid or having it in the middle?
It, it depends on what that vision of the future expansion would be. If folks want um a parking lot that's still going to be central and closest to all of the buildings, then the parking lot would still be in the middle and you would build the buildings on either side of it. But.
Happened in my lifetime.
Yeah, fair enough.
And it's too hard to, there's too many.
Okay, so, so that's, that's a good answer. Thank you. And then cost, is there any real changes? Because I mean, the running of the utilities and all these other things, you know, raised a flag in my head that, that this is an optimized cost. Where it's, and you know, we're trying to meet a budget.
It's definitely the least expensive as far as the amount of asphalt that you're putting down on the size of the paved area because you're putting the parking lot right next to the, the driveway instead of pulling it around to the back. Um, yeah, I think I mentioned in, in the staff report that if we do a flip, I, I know there's going to be a redesign cost because we have to go back and do some of those things um over again. Um, I can't really say what the construction cost difference will be until we kind of look at that cost and see what all of the design impacts are. I, I'm fairly sure it's not going to be less expensive to have the parking lot further away from the building because I, as I mentioned, there are those utility runs. But, you know, at the end of the day, I, I can't really put a, a number on, on that uh beyond the fifty thousand that I think would be safe to cover the, the redesign uh costs. And then um, you know, basically it's just, there's additional asphalt too if we do want to go with the multi-parking lot approach where we build the one back at Orchid and then we have kind of the satellite parking lot that's closer to the building with the ADA and the book drop. So that's, there's additional material um cost for additional paved area to split the parking lot into.
Okay, thank you so much.
Ever addressed Councilmember Andre's question about uses? I didn't know if Mr. Mayor wanted me to. We haven't specifically contemplated what would happen in this room. Vice Mayor Way is talking about yoga and some other classes. That sounds awesome. The library would like to do some nighttime programming. I would say generally though, from the overview of the staff, the number one issue is the community room at CNPA is booked all the time and we have many upset community groups who can't use it. So my number one thought is everybody who gets turned away from CNPA's room will probably want to book these rooms for their groups to meet. And that'd probably be a heavy use of the room. So I don't know what those parking demands look like on any given night because the size of those groups are going to vary quite a bit. But I would suspect that's going to be the most common evening use of the building.
Okay, any other questions for staff before we begin? All right, I, I have one question for staff. Uh, and that question is, uh, Julian, uh, you gave a list of um potential issues if the parking were moved uh down to Orchid uh from the accessibility, the fire concerns, that entire list. Uh, my question for you is if the staff hypothetically, I love that word, hypothetically, if council gave direction to staff uh to come up with a version of this where the parking was next to Orchid, but yet we met all of those requirements, we were ADA-compatible, we had a fire road, we had, you know, some parking that's, you know, close, you know, for, you know, a smaller satellite parking like we talked about. What would that look like and what timeline are we talking about? Because I know we have time deadlines and I know this then would have to be, go through planning again. And I, I just want to make sure I understand what our actual choices are tonight. And I'll open that up to anyone, staff.
Before Julian speaks, I think part of the answer to your question ultimately comes from why you want to move the parking lot and what you want to put in its place. So I'm not, I'm not asking it to be flipped, I'm saying.
Right, but and I'll.
Part of what will drive, I think, the design work is what you are contemplating.
Sure. And I, and I think ultimately, uh, what I have heard from the community is they think it will be prettier, it will be more user-friendly uh if the parking were on the side and there was a green area in the middle next to the library, people can kind of flow out of the library into this big green area as opposed to a parking lot dividing the library from green space on the other side of the parking lot. Now, while that may be the vision, the question is, is this practical? And if we, if we wanted to consider this, what steps would we realistically have to take? And what timeline are we looking at and is it even a possibility?
So only further request I'd have, Mr. Mayor's, green space is a really big umbrella term. So some of the people have commented want a gathering space that's green, that's different than green space, that's landscaping, right? We could do the teaching garden in the middle of the lawn. So we really need to understand if the, the, the direction from council is a gathering space, essentially a green lawn of some kind.
For, for, for purposes of my question, I have no idea.
Just checking with.
For, for purpose of my, purposes of my question, it is if the community would prefer not to have the parking lot dividing the library from the extra space, I'm calling green space, call whatever you want, landscaping. If they would like the parking lot kind of outlining the property and having the library contiguous with whatever this space is. And the council said, staff, is that possible? Can you come up with a design where the parking can be on the outside and still meet all these requirements? The ADA, the fire roads, all these other things that we have to do? Can you do that? How long is that going to take? And hypothetically, if you come up with something that we love and then it's got to go back to planning and then we got to have more public hearings and we have timelines in order to spend the funds, is this a realistic possibility? That we need to even go down this path because i- if you say, you know what? It's going to take nine months to do that and the funding has to be used in six months. Thank you very much and, and we can move on, you know, so I'm, I'm just trying to find out realistically, is that even something that we can do?
So um, I, I think we could probably sketch out some alternatives for um what an alternate layout could look like. And there's, obviously there's some different permutations. I think the definitely would want to bring the ADA parking closer to the building and then we would have to talk about a book drop and then a turnaround and then sketch some things out, see what makes sense. And then they would have to get drafted up and then we would have to talk to fire um and look at all the, the codes on turnarounds and everything like that and make sure that what we had kind of makes sense. And then we could probably put a little cost estimate to what the delta is. Um, I don't think it's something we could come back on the sixteenth. I think it would have to probably be the, the meeting after if we wanted to come back and have that conversation.
So, so hang on, let, let me stop you right there because I heard earlier in today's meeting, we have a drop-dead deadline on the sixteenth for the actual building itself. Um, so is this going to mess up that deadline and if it does, what are the consequences?
So it will, in a sense, affect the schedule. So the building itself requires a building permit that is on the critical path that has to meet the deadlines that I mentioned before. Technically, some components of the site are part of the building permit, but some of them are part of the grading permit. Um, but the other, the other issue is the contractor is looking to break ground the first of January. And typically, the first thing they're going to want to do is build the parking lot because they're going to run the project off of the parking lot. So the parking lot location is something that's going to have to be decided and vetted very early on or the contractor's not going to be able to mobilize in their most efficient manner if the parking lot, lot is still up in the air. So I would say it's, it's not as critical, critical path as the inner core of the building, which is why before when I mentioned that we have probably two weeks for the building and maybe the site work can go another couple of weeks because that's, doesn't require the building permit. But it's, it's still a very tight window and I don't know that I can come back in two weeks with all of the information you need. I can probably come back with an update, but um.
All right, so let's say hypothetically it was four weeks. I mean, obviously I'm, I don't want to task you to something that's impossible. Right? So we, we end up in the first week of November and you give us some kind of rough plan. And hypothetically, we all say, wow, that is awesome, right? I'm sure it's not a final plan, so there's going to have to be more work done on that plan. And then you're going to have to go to planning to get it approved and then we have Thanksgiving and Christmas and all that stuff. I mean, i- if, if it's not possible, just tell us it's not possible and, and we'll, we'll move on. I mean, I, I, I don't, e- e- even though I, I like the idea of having a, the grassy area in the middle, I'm not willing to tank the library or the deadlines or the funding to do that at this point.
Right. So I won't say it's not possible, but what it does do is if you look at our schedule and how everything's laid out, if we lose that six or eight weeks now, that six or eight weeks that we may really wish we had in February if we run into, to weather issues. So I can't definitively say it's a make or break, but I can tell you that I would be concerned about losing schedule time at this point because we may need that on the back end or we may need it if we get a really wet winter and we may at that time wish we hadn't spent an extra eight weeks looking at, looking at this. So I can't definitively say yes. All I can say is it takes all of our float out of the schedule.
Okay. All right, um. Uh, let, let's, let's hear public comment and then we can, we can talk about it. Let, let me open this up to public comment to this point. Uh, if you uh would like to make a comment, we'll start with uh, is there anyone in staff that has comments before I open it up to the public? No? Okay. Uh, let me open it up to the public. If anyone has any comments uh on the parking issue, now would be your time. Come on up to the mic, give us your name and uh, let's hear what you got to say. And I'm going to set this for two minutes uh as well, just because we're getting a little bit late in the evening.
Andy Blavell, I'll try to be faster this time. Uh, the numbers really matter. Um, but the number started with three and a half, right? There's seven spots, shared city hall and the library now. So we're going to go way up from three and a half to something much better. I respect that there are people who need to drive here. Whether this is close, you know, with that walking to the, the parking, the city parking lot or not, it's certainly closer than this building is to that city parking. Fifty-two, uh, that number at the three, for the master plan, three per thousand, that's twenty-seven. Uh, twenty-seven doesn't require any, um, you could, you could put twenty-seven or more than twenty-seven pretty easily on here without uh any street parking. What makes Larkspur Downtown great is its small-scale urbanity. The buildings are right up on the street. We don't have plenty of parking, right, that you can pull in. It's not at all suburban. We need to have access here, but we also need to recognize that this is sort of uh an important extension of the, you know, downtown core. Um, I recognize there's some urgency here. I recognize that there was some consultation beyond just the staff with some city council members who spent a lot of time and some, some consultation. But nonetheless, the public process, when everything just came out, really just landed prior to the Planning Commission. And that's when it became apparent to the public that the Commons had lost the Commons and was now built around a parking space. I mean, I love metaphors, but you know, this, the Commons disappeared. And one thing you do when you have public meetings is that sometimes you come up with different ideas from the public. I love the way that all the ideas have changed the sustainability. For example, we've got option one in the middle, option two in Orchid. How about option three? If you turn left when you come in. A quick visualization of the, those, those blocks of parking, you could get fifteen, twenty spots there, you've got thirteen across the street. So you're already at thirty-something, which is well more than twenty-seven, way more than half of what you had for a twenty thousand square foot building, for an eight thousand square foot building. It allows you to have the, the um handicap right there by the entries. It allows you to have the fire engine right there. You're closer to Doherty, so it's even cheaper. Half the amount of asphalt on-site is going to be half the cost, so it's cheaper. So that's, that's, and then you have a right turn only lane when you come out and you make sure that it's a hundred feet or whatever it needs to be from the intersection so that you have a single one-way flow which is safer and you can act at even more cars in the same square footage because you're all going one way. So there's a lot of alternatives that have not had time to be vetted, like that one that I happen to prefer, that um could put lots of parking on here, ten times what we've got now, enough to accommodate people, but keep the Commons. So that's what I'd like to advocate for.
Okay, thank you, Andy.
Hi, JJ Andre again. Uh, similarly, Andy, I love the passion here. I love the mayor's passion on this. I love the vice mayor's passion. I love Andy's passion. We're making, I think you guys are making some really good decisions tonight on the last one. I'm sure we're going to do it here as well. No one's talking about three parking spots. The question is, how many? Are we talking about twenty-five, thirty-five, forty-five? Um, also, parking isn't free. We all want free parking, but it's. We all want free parking, but it's not free. In the last presentation, we're saying two million fifty thousand is what the parking estimate is. If you divide that by the number of spaces listed, that's forty-five thousand dollars per parking spot. Okay, parking's not free. Uh, to uh, council member Paulson's passion. Uh, parking can be expanded. Some of these things can't be expanded. You can easily start with thirty parking spots and add more later. None of us have a crystal ball, okay? None of us can say how many people are going to go to yoga class? Or how many people are going to go to the children's class? What we could do is start with twenty-five or thirty spots. It's way more than this area currently has. We could see in a year or two what the usage of those spots are. And then make a decision with empirical data, whether that is, those thirty spots is enough or not enough. Rather than doing the crystal ball thing that we're trying to do tonight. See, one other point I was going to make. The Rose Lane citizens have a legitimate concern, which I think you've all recognized. I think we all recognize. Um, and when I read through their comments, it's not asking for fifty spots or sixty spots or saying, hey, this is an auditorium. We need ninety spots. That's not what I saw them saying. What I saw them saying is please city, if this new building, which we all want, whether you're Greenbrier. Whether you're uh, wherever you are in the city and, or in the, kind of the region. What they're saying is if people start blocking our streets when they're not supposed to, there should be enforcement of that. Which is correct. Every city deals with that. Is that tickets? Is that towing? I don't know, but those are problems that can be solved in time. And just building an additional twenty or thirty spots at forty-five thousand dollars per spot doesn't really resolve that issue. If we have the world's greatest yoga class, we could easily have a hundred people there and those fifty spots are full.
Hey JJ, I'm sorry, I'm going to have to cut you. Time's up. Okay. Hey, thank you.
Hi, I'm Laura Lovett. I live on Larkspur Plaza Drive and I'm um. I think one of the big problems here is that. The landscaping is so vague at this point that people can't picture it. So they're putting in ideas that they already know about as opposed to seeing what could be done with the space. Um, the, all of the elements on the site can be integrated. I don't, I, the idea that the commons consists of a circle of grass, which is by the RFP not allowed because it's not native. Or low water. Um, somehow the whole site is the commons, the whole building, the place where people will come together and get rejuvenated and see each other. Is the commons, not a circle of grass. Um, I would definitely not move the parking lot. I would definitely widen the paths and make them decompose granite. So that you can put tables out there or chairs and benches. It would feel there, it would flow in and out. It would have a lot of the. Atmosphere of a, of a friendly neighbor cafe with a really great garden. And you absolutely really need to leave the parking where it is. For ADA reasons, for all of us who hobble around for a year after knee surgery. Um, for the fire trucks, all the rest. I, we don't need two sets of parking lots, just because somebody wants to. Squeeze some grass in somewhere. And besides, we all know it's going to be the dog poop yard. So it won't be a place you want to sit down and have a picnic with your granddaughter or whatever.
Thank you.
James Holmes, Larkspur. Uh, having a parking lot instead of a lawn is not the, it's just the latest disappointment in a long line of them relating to this project. Starting with the drastic downsizing. But no matter how you reconfigure the parking or uh, refine the mechanical systems. It will be like putting lipstick on a pig because of the building's design. That design may be modernistic, but it is not new. It is the exact same type of design, sharp cornered, angular, cold, industrial modernism. That was roundly panned by the community when it was a few years ago. Put forth in a major uh, workshop of the type that we have not had in this process. After that design fiasco, the city held several workshops to ascertain what was termed the look and feel of Larkspur. In no way does this structure reflect the results of that process. The structure does not comply with basic design review requirements. That they be compatible with surrounding structures, which are traditional in si- in, in nature. Uh, the, the structure does not comply with the requirement of the central, of the specific uh, uh. The downtown specific plan that buildings be generally traditional in nature to complement with downtown. The loss of a lawn is not the only letdown. The design is not only unlike the traditional drawings that the promoters used uh, to solicit donations. It is totally opposite to them. Uh, I reminded the council at various times of these past provisions and asked if they be uh, considered. Uh, they seen, I remember one council member saying, oh yes, I remember all of them. Uh, they seem to be forgotten for whatever reason. And what I think needs to go back to the drawing board in the time that we have left. Is the basic design, which I think that citizens will be shocked to see going up. Because they, most of them are not aware of it now. Thank you.
Thank you, James. Well, good evening again. David Mahler lives here in Larkspur. I think we all want to have an adequate number of parking spaces. But clearly there's a little bit of squishiness, maybe a lot of it of how many is an adequate number. Uh, it may be a good time to think about putting in a certain number. And if it turns out to be inadequate, expanding in the future, rather than building the Safeway parking lot to start with. But what I really want to talk about is the location of the parking lot. So in my view, and I think many people's view, we have a one-time opportunity. To create a Larkspur Commons or Town Square that Larkspur does not presently have. One-time opportunity. And there are a lot of justifications for locating the parking lot in the middle of the site. And staff has done a really good job of identifying these, sharing them with you. But there are even better justifications to locate the parking on the perimeter. And preserve the middle of the site as a public common space. Now, just go with me on this. Think of the Lucky Center parking lot, the Lucky Site. Okay, when you think of that site, what comes to mind for you? A giant parking lot surrounded by a fringe of buildings. Now I wanted you to come up with a different vision. Think of uh, Marin Country Mart. Or think of the Depot Square in downtown Mill Valley. The cars are on the outside. And the space, the common space, the town square space that people want to be in is on the inside. Which one of those do you want to be in? So we have a chance to get this right. There's a lot of pieces moving around, but it's really not a choice of one or the other. It's not a choice of adequate parking or having a, a centralized common space. We can have both. And this space can really become the gem of Larkspur if we get it right. So I'm going to turn it over to Robin, who's going to give you a two-minute tour. There's been a lot of discussions. Can you do both of these things? Can they be accomplished? We've already come up with some designs. She's just going to give you a brief tour through them. Uh, and I hope that in the end here, uh. You won't be talked into going with an outdated vision of putting the cars central and the people in buildings. Thank you.
Thanks, David.
Hi, I'm Robin Muller from Larkspur and um, I'm delighted that the Larkspur Library is moving toward construction. Um, and it can provide a sustainable community hub that we can all be proud of. Your original plan to create a central commons on the site was inspired. Um, and I'd like to see the commons retained, creating a walkable hub linking the schools, the new library, the redeveloped Lucky Site and downtown. I hope the commons provides the catalyst for change at those other under, underutilized, underoccupied sites nearby. Um, the letter they sent you um, and itemizes why I think a commons is an important component for our community. This uh, alternative site plan illustrates how um, I respect the, the program that you presented to, um, to the architect. And I'm, I'm quite certain that the architect has created an alternate plan that shows parking not in the center of the site. Um, in this scheme, um. Cars access down Rose Lane come to the node that you've identified in your site plan. Can do a, a drop-off loop here with the, like the book drop-off and um. And can uh, ADA parking and then can continue up here to um, parking place. You can see that by quitting clustering the parking here, we're respecting the Rose Lane um, properties. And um, providing separation. There's also burming along this, at this vicinity, so that there's more separation from Rose Lane as well. But in the end, creating a commons here in the middle. That um, is not a big grassy circle, which I think we've heard many people say. Um, and it's instead more like those places that David talked about or like um. Uh, the places in France where you, you've seen DG on the, on the ground. You've seen um, crushed gravel, um, you've seen plazas. You've seen places with chairs and tables that you can move around, that you can sit at. Um, that you could check um, chests and um, uh, Jenga out at the library circulation desk. And you could read to your grandchildren or you could um. Uh, run whole hoops from the, from the circulation desk. You know, you could do that yoga class out in the center of something. Um, I showed an access here at this end for emergency truck access because I recognize that. That was, I'm not sure what you're saying. Um, there's another plan, oh, there's this turnaround here. There's a commons here in the center with the uh, with a fountain maybe. Um, here's another alternative that shows parking down here. You could get additional parking here if you want more than the twenty. I was designing to the twenty-three spaces that the way I read the, the um, the program. Said two and a half spaces per thousand square feet of building and that came out being twenty-three spaces, so.
I'm sorry, time's up. Hey, can you uh, leave those up there and just spread them out a little bit? Okay, thank you. Appreciate it. Other comments? Um, hang on, we have somebody uh, still here and then we'll, we'll go online when we finish the comments here, okay?
Hi, my name's Michael Rifle. I'm a resident at Larkspur, King Street, same spelling. I also am a member of a fairly recognized tribe. I just want to say for the Miwak people who, if you read IJ or any other information formats. That archaeological sites have been discovered, but they dated here four thousand four hundred plus years ago. I think a beautiful open space, one way or another, landscape, however you look at it, would be a civil nod to the people who have been here before. This morning I stood on the corner of Rose Lane and Doherty. And I looked at the proposed sites of the building. I thought, you know what? That's a beautiful sound barrier from the road noise on Doherty. If you were to put a common area on the west side or the far south side. It will lose some of the protection of the sound barrier effect and then perhaps the safety. Also, I just like to say that my home on King Street is protected by one of the last stands of redwoods in Larkspur proper. It has come to that situation because a lot of small decisions were made over a long period of time. I beseech all you good people that you can make some very fine judgments that will have lasting impacts upon this beautiful town. Thank you.
Hey, thank you. Okay, other comments uh, from the chamber? Seeing none, uh, let's go online. Allison, do we have any comments online?
Yes, Speaker, you may unmute yourself.
Is that me? Okay, hi, this is Matt Hartzell. Um, I acknowledge that not all of Larkspur's many neighborhoods are within walking distance to the library. I actually think that almost all of them are within biking distance. And that's thanks to Larkspur having a stellar network of pathways. And sixty-five percent of the population in fact feels comfortable on safe and separated pathways. So it's great, sixty-five percent of our citizens can bike to the library. But I also realize there's another thirty, thirty-five percent of the population that doesn't ride bikes. And they definitely do need some parking. And I think that we've seen that there's can be an adequate amount of parking provided at the site. So my comment is not about the, the number of parking, but about the location. And it's really not about the parking, it's about the commons and it's an urban design question. Um, and it, the commons itself is not a lawn. We, we've heard it referred to many times as a great lawn and a grassy expanse. But we also understand that the city has water conservation goals and that a, a lawn is retrograde, retrograde and, and not forward-looking. So as Robin stated, there are many other designs that can be used to create a open area commons in the center of the site. That are, that are very low water use, but that are excellent designed, urban design spaces that will appeal to the public. Finally, it was, it was noted that um, having the parking closer to the building is a concession to parents with strollers. I am a parent with a baby in a stroller and I would much rather walk the extra hundred feet or less. From a parking lot slightly farther away from the building to the library than having my parking space less than a hundred feet from the building. I will note that a hundred feet is the same distance as Silver Peso to Ruly. And um, thank you, that's my time.
Thank you. Allison, you have other comments online?
Looking for any additional raise hands from our Zoom audience members. And there's no further public comment.
Okay, uh, I will close public comment and bring it back up to council. Uh, would anybody like to lead us off on this one?
Sure. Um, I think my opinion is pretty well-known. I, I would really like to um, to say to my fellow council members is that we have a staff. Um, who really work for us and they have the expertise that we have hired them to do. And we trust that they have the expertise to think through, because we have quality staff, a quality public works um. Uh, team to think through these matters um, for what is best for the majority of our residents. And they employ an uh, Alton and other experts in the architectural world and the planning world. And they present to us what they think is the very best renderings. After all of the years and years and years of public comment and public process that we've had. And I like to trust that at this time in this decision-making, in this constrained amount of time. After twenty years of working on this project, that they have presented us with the best. Um, perspective of what they can accomplish within the timeframe, within the constraints of the space. And within the budget that we have. And we can um, as non-experts arbitrarily talk about all different types of configurations. But I don't have the expertise for that. And I rely upon our staff and the people that they have vetted to make those decisions for us who are professionals in this line of work. And with that, I think what has been presented to the planning commission and approved. And what has um, been vetted by our public works director and all of the, and Kitchell and all of the other experts in this matter. Is the plan that I think we should go with.
Okay, other comments from council members?
Sure, just, just a couple of clarifications. So I actually, I appreciate council member ways. Um, you know, it is always good to remember, like the one public comment was made that, you know, we should do something that's empirical, not arbitrary. I, I think we're far from arbitrary here. There's been so much thought put into this. Um, just I, I, I know we're running really late, but uh, when it comes to the parking, I think what I heard was. The different configurations don't really constrain expansion. They don't really alter the one million dollar cost. Um, the mayor was saying like, gosh, do we even have the time to, to reconfigure? I, I wasn't really clear on the answer. Um, I'll just state my personal preferences. I think the, the parking spots, I'll go with what council member ways said, you know, we've spent a lot of time. And um, Julian, correct me if I'm wrong, you know, saying that a spot is forty-five thousand dollars, it's not linear. I mean, there's economies of scale. If we chop the number of spots in half, we're not going to save half the money. It's, you know, by the time you get it paved and asphalted. So we're not saving a lot if we go from forty-five to thirty, are we? Or am I wrong in that?
Uh, I'm not clear where the forty-five thousand dollars came from. Roughly speaking, a parking spa space is about $10,000. So I think there were some, there's some numbers in the budget for the site work and the parking lot that are all inclusive. That's maybe where the number came from that was divided by the number of parking spaces. But we're not spending, we're not spending $45,000 per parking space. No, they're
Okay.
It's about 10,000.
Thanks for that clarification. So I mean, just to, you know, summarize, I think the number lands right with me. I also want to remind people that sometimes cars are seen as, you know, greenhouse gas emitters. And we have a state law where they're all going to be electric pretty soon. So access is important. I I think encouraging people to come and use the space is important. But I do really feel the notion of the commons that rings lands with me as well because I, you know, we're all, you know, a little bit, you know, it's challenged that the library, because of many reasons, had to be so small and to use sliding doors, indoor outdoor configurations and commons to me makes it a bigger library with many more, you know, purposes. So I would love it if it's truly not constraining constrained by cost or expansion or by the timeline to direct staff to look into the possibility of a reconfiguration.
All right. Well, I want to appreciate all the public comments and clearly all the work that has been put into this library design. So I I think, you know, what we're talking about here is is in no way, you know, disparaging all the work that has been that has gone into this design and it is going to look fabulous. So Alton and and Nolan Tam, it is, this is a very exciting project for us. So the fact that we're discussing the parking and potentially moving it as doesn't say that we don't. We we absolutely are very grateful for your work and your design here. You know, I I think the the pieces of this that really resonate with me most are preserving a common space for our community. And I think I I've read that many times in the public comments, heard it here. I heard it at the planning commission meeting. And this is, you know, the this this the central parcel, first of all, this this parcel lies at a very important intersection within our town. Um, and then this parcel itself, the middle part of that piece of land is very valuable with its views. It's it would be protected by the building on one side. And then you have, you know, the residential area around it. So from my perspective, I think the fact that if we can, the the fact that the middle of the parcel is really the best part of it, I I think it would be a shame really to to pave it or or to put a parking lot there. I would like to be able to explore different ways of configuring parking lots so that we do meet a lot of these the criteria here that our our staff has has put forward. I I think there are ways that we can think creatively about addressing these needs while also, you know, incorporating the public's feedback about the need or the desire for a common space in the middle. And I I agree with the comments that I I don't want to see it grass. I I I'm, you know, I think grass is not environmentally friendly. Not, you know, it's it requires too much water. So I I I think that, you know, the the concept for me would be that it's a it's a it's a quiet space for reading, for, you know, sitting with your grandkids. I mean, it's not a, it's not meant to be a space like an amphitheater space for people to make loud noises or but it's really a place for for sitting, for reading, for enjoying the views. I wouldn't. So in terms of that, I think we can landscape it so that it's, you know, not a great big lawn space where people come and like I said, like like an amphitheater or people, you know. I don't, I don't want it to be, I don't want people to misconstrue the the idea of a commons as as being a lawn, because I don't think that's that was the intent. And then, you know, in terms of the number of parking spaces, I think as I think about this, you know, I I did go around and I did count the spaces that we have nearby. Just so that people know, you know, 45 parking spaces is a lot of parking. I mean, it's it's it it takes up a lot of space. I mean, you know, the the spaces that we're talking about. So in Piper Park, that's it. That's basically the entire row of parking along the tennis courts. Or it's three quarters of the parking lot over at Trader Joe's, three of those, three of the parking rows over at Trader Joe's. I mean, it's 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 a lot of space. It's a lot of asphalt. It's going to be. You you know, I mean, Hall Middle School has 51 parking spots. So I I think as we're thinking about the parking, I don't know what the exact number is. I think we've all, you know, agreed that we want something that makes sense, that is sensible and that accommodates our community's needs. But, you know, as we're trying to figure out, you know, what's the right number of parking, it's hard to pave something and then and then take it away. I I, you know, it's just hard to do that. Whereas it's easy to, if we want to expand parking, you know, to build maybe a little bit less. And then if we need more parking, we can always add on. And then lastly, I I certainly respect that, you know, we're up in a timeline and so, you know, redesigned the parking lot could potentially push things back. I I do think that I I would like to see if it can be reconfigured and then I'd like to see, you know, how far back that might push things. But my experience has been that it is that the parking lot is usually the last thing that gets paved in a in a project. So I I understand that the the conduits and the things underneath need to be figured out and that, you know, we need to do the wiring and and the plumbing and so forth. But I I think the actual parking lot itself, you know, once we can figure out the configuration of where we want it to go, I think, you know, we have a little bit more time with that with respect to the actual building.
All right, hang on, let me let me get some comments in here. Is it okay?
Well, I I just want to just, in this picture, we have a commons. We have this huge lawn that's called the turf lawn right in front with all of these images of of seating areas and things here that looks much bigger than what you could actually put in a parking lot area. So, I mean, there is a common space, if that's what people are worried about. Right there.
All right, so clearly we're going to have to do some negotiating here because we have separate views. Let me ask Julian, which is easier to add parking spaces or take away parking spaces? Is that a bad question?
Well, it depends what's underneath, right?
All right, let me let me ask, let's, all right. So so let me let me start with, can you please put up the diagram of the current plan? Can someone please pull that up so we can all be looking at the same thing? All right. So so I I have, you know, I I agree with various things that different people have said. You know, I I I agree, we have to make sure that there's enough parking for people who can't walk there. I mean, it it's not fair not to do that. I agree, it would be nice to have contiguous space. You know, so my my question is, hypothetically, we've got the parking where it is right now. Let's say we decided to cut the parking off right after the where you go into the library, where the entrance is into the library. Right? And hang on one second. And then hypothetically, we wanted to expand the parking downward. You know, so it would, you know, it doesn't have to be an L like we were talking about, but it would just be more maybe have a square there. And and the compromise there is that now you would have contiguous green space from the bottom of the parcel all the way up to the library on the right hand side, including all the space on the right of the library. So that would be a big common area there in addition to the common area that Catherine had already mentioned. And if we had to, we could shorten the parking for now, approve it, move forward if if I I don't know which part of this is going to require planning approval and, you know, my biggest thing is I don't want to delay. I I want to do this tonight. Okay, because I Julian, I've heard what you said and you sugar coated it. And you say, well, yeah, I wouldn't prefer it. But what I heard is it's a mistake. It's a mistake to delay this thing because everything takes longer than you think and we're going to have holidays, we're going to have issues and we're going to be up against the deadline and we're going to wish we didn't do it. That that's what I heard. So, but I have also heard, you know what? You know, if there's some way that we can make a contiguous green space, the community would appreciate that. So my question is, I I don't understand what, so if hypothetically tonight, we just decided to do less parking, you know, and and do it up to the entrance. Would we need planning approval for that? Could we just go and then maybe at our next meeting, you know, approve parking coming? Because we wouldn't have any fire issues. We wouldn't have any ADA issues. We still have parking going right up against the building. So I don't think we have any of the issues that we we were concerned about.
I'd love to be deferred to now, Mr. Mayor.
Of course.
Because now I'm going to tell you, I strongly encourage you not to engineer from the diet.
Not to do that.
What I would do is say, you would like to see a diagram with parking reconfigured and potentially with less parking. What I will would challenge you on, I'm getting confused on what a commons is. If a commons is green space, we need to hear that. But I also have heard DG pavement. This is really relevant, Mr. Mayor. Let me finish. Because I need to know this as staff. It may better inform the people who will do the engineering and design about how to get a fire truck close to there. If you tell us the commons is a paved thing with planner boxes that they could potentially still drive a fire truck on if they needed to get up to it. But otherwise is a quiet contemplative contemplative seating area for people outside. That's a different design than a green lawn. And so if that's on the table, that'd be helpful to know if versus green space. But I would, I would encourage you to just say your preference is to see it another design than to get too far into those hypotheticals.
Well, I I just, I don't want to delay this as my concern. So so I guess my question.
But we're going to take your hypothetical as direction and that's the.
Right, no, no, but this is just for our conversation right now. So so for purposes of our conversation, I guess my question is, i- is it? Is it possible to move ahead with this? I I guess my my vision is for the parking to remain where it is, but you just take the right hand half of it and put it on the bottom. And that way you still have ADA compatibility. You still have everything that you need. But you have contiguous space and whatever that space turns out to be, whatever people say they want the common to be, that's not my issue. What I am hearing is that people would like contiguous space. They don't want space broken up by a parking lot. And if it's possible to take the right hand side of the parking lot and put it on the bottom, then we have contiguous space. We do whatever we want with it.
But with all due respect, you are not a traffic engineer.
I agree.
You're not an engineer.
I agree.
You're not a planner. You're not somebody who has spent their entire career working on these kind of projects and coming up with what is a reasonable expectation by size, by access, by dimensions. That's why we have a staff who came up with this, working with architects who had done these kind of projects before. So asking us to sort of, you know, quarter Monday morning quarterback and change them now, I think is not realistic. And the second part, this idea of a commons had been so well vetted in the the many years in which we have had this conversation as we've worked through this thing. And the compromise was that there's Piper Park across the street. There are other places for collecting in green lawn spaces. But the compromise was this large oval that stood the entrance to the library that could accommodate that. But to Laura's point, the the compromises also, where do we put the native plant? Contiguous pollinator native plant theme and ideas so that it isn't a big lawn, green lawn. It's something else and the city manager wants to talk.
Before we continue, Mr. Mayor, I require the council to consider if they'd like to make a motion to go past their 10:30 curfew.
Oh, right. We have a curfew.
Yeah, we got, we got to get this done tonight. So I'll make that motion. Anyone want a second? All right, do you want to roll call on that?
You could just say I'll have favor.
All favor?
All right.
Hi.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
So 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 and and Vice Mayor, I I agree with what you're saying. Okay, and I and I understand your your position. What I am also understanding though is that there is some some concern that we are going to be creating a project that is going to be here for a very long time. You know, and if there is a way to 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 make it that that meets what we're being asked for, but but see, but but Mr. City Manager, the problem is that I don't want to redesign. I don't want to, I don't want to go back and have.
I'm going to take a crack.
Go ahead.
I think you should give staff direction to assess the ability and timeline to do the redesign and get it started if we think it's doable to provide you an alternative. What we need is direction is we are hearing loud and clear. You want some sort of design that moves the parking and creates some sort of central space. I still want to get an answer to if that can be green or some mixture of landscaping and hard space because that's, I think, could actually solve a lot of challenges. You need to allow staff to come back and tell you all the things that went into this thought process that the new design violates and then you can.
Right, but but Mr. City Manager, so so my point is I understand the original concept was let's put the parking lot on the bottom.
No.
No, I'm not.
But Mr. Mayor, I have to keep May's point. That was.
That was an original. I I misspoke. Let me just, the the alternate plan that people are discussing.
Yeah.
Okay, is the parking lot on the bottom.
Right.
What I am saying is I acknowledge all of the problems that that's going to cause. Okay? And I get that. And that is a big project to ask staff to say, move the parking there and figure out all these problems and come back to us in two weeks. That that to me is a big lift. What I am instead asking is if it would be the same big lift if we just took the right half of the parking lot and put it on the bottom so that we don't have to worry about the ADA. We don't have to worry about the fire because we still have the parking going straight up to the library.
And I I I heard that and I'm acknowledging that. And I'm saying we heard that, we'll take that as direction.
Well, this is just from me. I don't want to, it is my opinion. Okay.
And we can work with that.
But I know that delay this project, though.
Yes, it will.
Okay.
And they read the letter from the from the Rose Lane Association about that position. It was in our public comment, but they're they're going to protest that to no end.
So can I ask from somebody from the, would it be appropriate for me to ask?
Do, this is a business item, Mr. Mayor. You've got all the control.
Can we get somebody from the design team to come up here and just to just explain? I mean, we have something right now that's done. We can, we can hit the button and move forward. If we if we change this, is there like a difference between a minor change and a major change? Or is it any change is going to be a three month delay because we got to do drawings and go through planning and and everything like that?
You put your finger on it just then with about a three month delay because that would be my just back of the envelope, you know, estimate of what it's going to take.
That's what I got from Julian.
This is a very finely tuned site plan. I mean, it's got, you know, accessible parking. The fire access is not just, just get to the building. You have to turn around and get out of the building. We've spent a lot of time with the fire department working this out. Where the building is on the site itself, it would require kind of pretty much redoing the entire site plan to accommodate some, even the minor things that you're talking about and still then make it work for all the code and other sort of authorities having jurisdiction that are going to have a have an opinion about it. So I would say, you know, we can look at alternatives. I know our original design proposal had a commons in the middle. But we worked through that, you know, with the whole design team to come up with what we are showing now because and everybody's considered, you know, sort of joint opinions, that was the right and the best move to go to. So I would say it's it's a very sort of tightly designed concept and it would require, I think, really looking at the entire site and really reconfiguring everything. And that's probably going to take several months.
All right. I I I I, that's what I thought I heard Julian say. I, 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 that's what I thought I heard Julien say. So, uh, with that in mind, um, I, I, I have.
Yeah. Did you identify yourself for the audience so that they know who you?
Sorry. I'm Chris Knoll, uh, Principal of Nolan Tam Architects.
And you are our, our architect that has been hired by the city to do this project. I just want everybody in the audience and in online to know that.
I, I actually work for Eric over here at Alton Construction Company. So we're a design build team.
Yeah.
And so we, uh, we are sort of an entity that works together to do that. But the team, the design build entity was hired by the.
Our experts. Thank you.
Yes.
All right. Ha- ha- having heard that, um, I, of course, of course.
I understand it's a very fine tuned, you know, design, is site plan. Is it possible to get started on the building while we're trying to sort out the parking lot? Or is that?
Eric will probably.
Um, I'm one of the partners at Alton Construction. Um, so there's a piece of this we haven't talked about yet, right? This is a design build project that has a deadline because of grants and things like that, right? So that's the urgency in time and everything, right? But what's even more important is when you bid a project, you need to bid it in a certain amount of time before the holidays to get the right number of bidders, right? To get the best pricing. Cause there's a pricing component to this as well. It's a stipulated sum. We have to deliver something to you guys for what we promised we would. We have scheduled right now to issue the drawings to bid to make our deadline of March twenty twenty six by, I think, eleven four or eleven five, those plans are supposed to be done and out to bidders to give them a month to review, to give us pricing for us to review it and come back to make sure we have a complete set of drawings. So really the urgency is in not just like the amount of time it's going to take to redesign it, but that just pushes the bid date back and everything. And we can't bid parts of the building and just bid the building and not the site work because everything is lumped into one price that we need delivered to you guys. So, I mean, i- it's a weird aspect of looking at it, but bidding is about timing and about getting drawings and getting interest in things to make sure that you're getting the best contractors. Cause we don't do all the work ourselves. We subcontract out pieces of the job, right? And it's important to make sure that we have this together in a timely fashion. We have a bid schedule and everything that, of course, that goes right along with the construction schedule and it's just as important. So the biggest thing I see here is Chris timewise is absolutely right. And I don't see a way that we can bid a stipulated some project by bidding parts of it and then working on something because the project needs to be a whole. And when we start construction or what we start doing anything, we need to know that budget is solid and it works. So does that make sense?
That's very helpful information. Thank you.
Thanks. Well, Chris.
Okay. Does anyone have any other questions for anyone else in the room? All right.
Can we put a water fountain in the middle?
I, I, I am going to make a motion to, uh, uh, move forward with the plans as drawn, being that I feel we don't really have a choice at this point. And I think we've discussed this as much as we could possibly discuss it. And I just think that's our only option. So I'm going to make that motion.
I agree. I'll second that.
So any, anyone, anyone want to discuss this before we vote on it? I mean, I just, I, I don't think we can wait three months. I think it's going to screw everything up and, you know, would.
Five and a half million dollars back to the state.
We, 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 yeah. So anyway, can we get a roll call, please?
Councilmember Andre?
No.
Councilmember Paulson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Way?
Yes.
Mayor Cando?
Yes. Okay. Hey, we got more stuff on the agenda. Business item eight point two, appointment to the Larkspur Tax Measures Citizen Oversight Committee. Can we get a, a staff report, please?
Uh, the council's conducted, uh, interviews of three candidates for one position on the Larkspur Tax Measures Citizen Oversight Committee. And tonight we'll be making appointment, the appointments to fill a vacancy that, uh, would fulfill the remainder of a term that ends on June thirty, twenty twenty eight.
All right. We didn't actually discuss this and we have just interviewed somebody tonight. Does anybody want to give a suggestion?
Sure. I'll go first. Um, I, I felt, you know, first of all, I was just so encouraged to see, you know, three good candidates step up and, you know, it's a really important job. I, I, um, started, you know, focusing, we, we just heard from Jonathan tonight. And what impressed me about his background was, you know, just his actual line of work that he's, you know, it says here founded a, a local community infrastructure startup. So, and, and, you know, his, um, fluency as someone who's just been reading some staff reports or something around measure B and G kind of impressed me because it's almost like, you know, give him an hour and he got pretty far, you know, give him a month. And I think he would, he would be a real asset. So he was my first choice. I, I thought Shane, I was so happy to see her apply and I hope she sticks with the process. Um, I, I didn't sense that she had, you know, quite the framing of what the role was. I'm sorry. Is that, I'm sorry. That's Isabella.
Isabel.
And, and, yeah, Isabel, sorry. And Shane, I thought was, was great as well. And I really, uh, you know, he seemed to have a good business sense. Um, so it was like a close second for me.
Um, I'll concur with that. I, I thought Jonathan came, um, forward. I just want to say for, if the other candidates are listening, thank you very much for being interested and, um, all of, both of your comments about wanting to get more involved in the city. You definitely have more opportunities to do that. Um, and, um, we really respect that you came forward. I, I still think Jonathan presents with the best, um, background for this and, um, I'm pleased with his application. I agree.
I agree as well. So, well, let me just say, I also really appreciate everybody who, uh, came forward and interviewed for this. And please, there's lots of other ways to get, to get involved. So please, uh, don't take this as rejection. Take it as, you know, there's, there's another opportunity coming up for you and please take advantage of that. So with that, uh, would anybody like to make a motion as to who to appoint?
Uh, I'll make that motion. Um, so, uh, I moved to appoint Jonathan to the, um, Tax Measures Oversight Committee.
I'll second it.
We roll call, please.
Councilmember Andre?
Yes.
Councilmember Paulson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Way?
Yes.
Mayor Cando?
Yes. Okay. Uh, item eight point three, appointment to the Marin County Sea Level Rise Governance Steering Committee. Can we get a staff report on that?
As the county is overseeing the Bay Wave project, which is a grant funded project to look at sea level rise. And they've requested that each city in town in Marin appoint one elected official to sit on a steering committee.
Well, um, I'll, I'll nominate, um, Mr. Paulson because of his environmental, uh, be friendly attitude and all the work that he does.
Wait, let me pull out the list of committees. I, I, I can't remember.
Volunteers.
I, I would like to make an appointment myself. Uh, I'd like to appoint, or I'm sorry, I'd like to suggest, um, Councilmember Andre because of her passion for the environment and it's a big environmental issue and her, uh, really good analysis that I've seen so far. And because I'm doing too many things.
I'll second that.
Can I, can I not? I, I don't want the appointment.
Okay. And if we are unable to find an appointment, why don't we put that off until after the November election?
Yeah.
So unfortunately, Mr. Mayor, this, for this committee, which only meets quarterly, I'm told, is going to meet this month. So they're hoping that you'll.
Okay. I'll, I'll take it. Somebody. I'll take it.
Why, why don't we revisit this in November when we do that? Right. So there'll be one, one meeting this quarter and then.
If it's quarterly, we can revisit it when we do new assignments next year.
Exactly.
And I do, I will say that while sea level rise affects all the cities and towns in Marin, I do know the county is particularly interested in the voices of the communities who have on the shoreline. So we certainly fit that category.
Fair.
Well, then I, I mean, I'd be happy to, Gabe, if you're overdone, if you're overcooked.
You'd be my second choice.
All right. I'll take it. Anybody?
I will know.
I second that. All right.
I'm, I'm, I'm over my head, but I'll, I'll learn to swim.
All right. And with that, uh, I believe, any of you have before we are adjourned? All right. We are adjourned. Thank you.
All right. Thank you.